I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. A little bit of a housekeeping. If you have a cellphone, please either put it in the silence mode or either turn it off, if you would, please. Next thing is conflict of interest. Does any commissioner have a conflict of interest with any item or items on tonight's agenda? Here ain't none. We move forward. Approve of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, move.
A second.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Did you raise your hand? Okay. Seven zero. The motion is approved. And we're now in items for presentation. There's been a little bit of a change. We were going to do something on EMS, but now we're going to have a presentation from Chris and Carney. Chris, okay.
Just a moment. I have a couple of slides I'd like to show you as we have this conversation. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for allowing us a few moments just to give you a quick briefing on where we are on the current forecast of Hurricane Dorian and be happy to answer any questions you have following this. This is the latest advisory, 1:00 from the National Weather Service. I was able to capture a couple of the conversation pieces from 5:00 just prior to coming into this meeting. Sure, sure. So as we go through this slide, I'll point out a couple of differences between what I've seen at 5:00 versus 1:00 today. The current track, still pretty consistent on this. As you're all aware from our informational emails, this track has really tightened up along the North Carolina coast. Forecasters are still pretty adamant that this is going to probably make landfall or brush the Cape Fear area of Wilmington, kind of stay parallel with the coast, possibly brushing Moorhead, crossing Cape Lookout, and following the barrier islands toward Cape Hatteras. Now, as we look at this track, one thing that's important to remember, historically speaking for these track models, inside of four days, there's about a 50-mile range, historically speaking, that this is accurate to. So the track we see in forecast models is a center line. It could vary 50 miles, give or take either side, which could have some significant impact changes for us in Beaufort County. The timing of this remains consistent. We do expect this storm to be somewhere around Myrtle Beach Wednesday afternoon about 8:00 a.m., approaching the Wilmington area Thursday morning, and would be somewhere in the vicinity of Moorhead, Cape Lookout by midday, mid-afternoon Thursday. We are currently under a hurricane watch for Beaufort County. We do anticipate this to change to a warning, most likely tomorrow morning or sometime around lunchtime. We're also under a moderate rain threat. For our areas of Beaufort County, you all know these storms like to dissect our county either north or south or east or west, and this is one of those east or west storms. We do anticipate areas west of Bath and Blunts Creek to receive four to six inches of rain. Areas west of that, it's probably going to get six to 10. Now, there's a couple of variables that could change with that. As this storm continues to travel north, and again, we look at history, as a storm travels north, those windfields tend to expand, which also means the participation bands tend to expand. So we could see those numbers adjust depending on the track or depending on how this storm evolves over the next 36 hours. But generally speaking, for our area, four to 10 inches of rain, the far eastern side of our county could have some isolated areas that receive up to 15 inches. Based on the current tracks, I would suspect that would be around the Aurora area and possibly the Pamlico Beach area would be the targets that I would look for for those types of numbers if we have them. This has probably been the biggest piece of information we've attained today, that's storm surge. Right now, generally speaking, the waterfront properties along our county should expect three to six inches of storm surge. And when we say storm surge, that's level above what normal would be. To kind of put that in context, and I'm careful when I give this example because storms can do different things, but during Florence, we received eight to 10 in most of our areas. Feet. So we would be looking at three to six feet of storm surge along most of our areas. We're going to work through tonight and tomorrow morning to try to break that down at a community level so we can provide some more details of what areas should be getting or should be expecting, but we probably won't have that information available until sometime tomorrow. With wind threats, we kind of break this into two different criteria, tropical storm force. Right now, we are in Beaufort County, we have about a 70% chance of experiencing tropical storm force winds from Thursday through Thursday night into Friday. For hurricane-force winds, we're currently at about a 20% to 30% chance, but both of those percentages are rising. So as this storm travels north, the windfields expand. We could see those percentages change to reflect that widening of the storm for us here in Beaufort County. I think preparation-wise, tomorrow's probably going to be our last nice day. Things are going to start to deteriorate tomorrow afternoon into tomorrow night and particularly for Thursday. We will probably start to see some rain move in our area beginning tomorrow evening and into tonight, possibly some squalls with some gust of winds. Thursday morning, probably continue with rain and some lighter winds, but we should be reaching that tropical storm threshold midday, 3:00 tomorrow is what we're anticipating based on the current track. Now, this storm's been tricky to predict, particularly with timing. The path, the models have been pretty spot-on throughout, but the timing has been an issue. So this storm is expected to continue a generally slow northern trend through Wednesday and then really accelerate Wednesday afternoon through Thursday and Friday as it makes that northeastern turn and away from the coastline. These numbers may change, it's just something we have to monitor in the coming days. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that any of you may have for us and our approach so far.
When the storm makes its turn, I guess somewhere around Cape Lookout, somewhere in that area of Wilmington, how fast is it going to move out of here?
We expect whatever impacts Dorian brings to our county, we're going to see the worst of it Thursday midday through early Friday morning. We do anticipate Friday morning, maybe going into lunchtime, we should be on the backside of the storm. We still should see some of those wraparound gusty winds, probably at a tropical storm force level if best, but whatever punch this brings, we expect to see it Thursday midday through Friday about noon. That's based on the current track and progression.
And what is the likelihood of isolated tornadoes?
For, it's marginal or minimal for this storm. That risk is primarily going to be from that stretch of land between Wilmington and Cape Lookout because of the way the winds are wrapping around this storm and making landfall. It is possible, the area of Aurora, the southeast corner of our county, they're right on that tornado risk line, but it's minimal for our county as a whole. It is possible, but not elevated.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Okay, I've got, I'll go ahead and read the ordinance. Beaufort County's State of Emergency Ordinance Proclamation of a Beaufort County State of Emergency, Section 1 pursuant to County of Beaufort State of Emergency Ordinance and Chapter 166A of the General Statute and Article 36A, Chapter 14 of the General Statutes. I have determined that a state of emergency has defined therein exists in the County of Beaufort, Section 2. I hereby proclaim the existence of a state of emergency in the County of Beaufort, Section 3. I hereby order all law enforcement officers, employees, and all other emergency service workers, subject to my control, to cooperate in enforcement and implementation of the provisions of the County Emergency Ordinance that are set forth below. This requires all Beaufort County departments to work with the National Incident Management System during Hurricane Dorian response and recovery phases. Section 4, Execution of Emergency Plan. All civilian and emergency services workers are hereby ordered to comply with Emergency Operations Plan. Section 5, The proclamation shall become effective immediately. Proclaim that this, the third day of September 2019 at 5:30 p.m., the state of emergency remain in effect until lifted by this commission. And just a few notes we wanted to add to it. Number one, I know that the general public has a lot of questions about the Hurricane Dorian and what's in store for us. Please note that there are still many uncertainties about the potential track of the storm. Please rest assured that the county staff are closely monitoring changes in the storm, have emergency plans in place, and will alert the public as soon as possible on any updates, including evacuation orders, shelter openings if needed, transportation assistance, points of distribution location, or feeding assistance. The county will provide updated information to the public by pushing information to local news outlets and by publishing updates on the county's website. Number three, I urge that everyone take Hurricane Dorian seriously, use this time wisely for preparation.
Any questions?
Could you get information directly to me? I can email right now.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Martin?
Okay. Well, I come to talk about Aurora in a slightly more optimistic manner, I guess, than what we've just heard. Cliff Williams, the mayor, was going to be here, but because of the hurricane, he's stayed in Aurora to assist with preparations there, and also they have a council meeting tonight as well, so they're going to be talking about what you guys just talked about, about the hurricane. I basically came here to give an update on the Aurora Industrial Park. We've been talking about this for quite a while, in fact, about four years. And as you know, the park is very much needed in Aurora. Basically, the growth is stagnant there and declining population as in many places in eastern Beaufort County. But it also provides an opportunity for companies there to provide a much better environment for their employees and through community services such as sewer water and paved roads. The location, as I just showed on the map, is near the Highway 33 Fire Station in Aurora. It's 51 acres, which the purchase price is $450,000. The town's already rezoned it and there's adjoining acreage ready for purchase if necessary. The big effect here is going to be on the tax base of Aurora. Basically, there's going to be a 51% increase, as we have projected, taking their tax base from 22 and a half million to about 24 million. So that'll mean an awful lot to the town in terms of services they're able to provide their citizens. Potential job estimates that we did in 2018 and the grants that we have received from Golden Leaf and the Department of Commerce, we said there'd be 48 existing jobs moved into the park and then the creation of 19 jobs. So these are the jobs that we used in our grant applications. As we've progressed in terms of looking at this project, we've found a much stronger interest from the contractors than we had. Just to quote a couple here, Varitek is looking at a total of 40 jobs on the site, 20 of them being new. Washington-based CCC is looking at having 60 jobs out there, 20 of them being new. So there is much bigger impact. A number of industries have already signed letters to move out there. These are three of, sorry, four of them. And then also, there's about 16 companies that have shown interest. So we look to actually have a big impact out there, and we are getting support from the private sector. Current situation is, as you know, you passed a resolution and then another resolution to provide a loan for $450,000. We have received $5,000 from Duke Energy to do some site readiness grants. As I said earlier, Golden Leaf has approved $200,000 grant for infrastructure, and the North Carolina Department of Commerce has put $750,000 in it. So we are well on our way to making this industrial park a reality. $950,000, basically in infrastructure. It's probably, once we get everything in place, probably going to take about nine months to build that infrastructure. And the next steps are that we need to start getting all the legal documentation together to both accept the grants, do the loan with the county, begin the engineering drawings, and permitting and things like that. So that's where we are today, and just thought it'd be good to give you an update of where we are. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to you all. I'm here this evening with the county purchasing agent, Holly Jones, and we're here to do a presentation and talk about purchasing and procurement in Beaufort County. So as I'm sure that you're aware, there are many laws and guidelines that we have to follow as a local government when we are procuring goods and services. And the bottom line is, the reason we have to do that is because the Supreme Court said we have to do that. In fact, in 1945, the Supreme Court stated, "The purpose of competitive bidding laws is to prevent favoritism, corruption, fraud, and imposition in the awarding of public contracts by giving notice to prospective bidders and thus assuring competition, which in turn guarantees fair play and reasonable prices for contracts involving the expenditure of public money." So in short, the reason we have bidding laws is to promote fairness and transparency, to encourage competition, to procure quality goods and services, and to make very wise use of public funds. So I'd like to go into the North Carolina General Statutes now, and I'd like to begin with General Statute 143-131, and that's the general statute that governs informal bidding. So informal bidding is required when we are purchasing apparatus, supplies, materials, and equipment that is greater than or equal to $30,000 but less than $90,000. Or we're doing a construction or repair job that is greater than or equal to $30,000 but less than $500,000. North Carolina law states that the contract shall be awarded to the lowest responsible responsive bidder, taking into consideration quality, performance, and the time specified in the bid. And when we talk about responsible bidders, what we mean is, does that contractor or that bidder have the skills, knowledge, and experience and financial resources that it takes to fulfill that contract? And a responsive bidder means that that bidder complied with all material respects and specifications of the bid. So the procedures for informal bidding are not really stipulated in the statutes, believe it or not, but typically, with informal bidding, that means that we are speaking to vendors either by phone or by email to receive several quotes for the item that's being purchased or for the service that is to be provided. And then again, there are no minimum number of bids that must be received through the informal bidding process, although there should be multiple sources solicited, multiple bids from different sources solicited. So moving on to the formal bidding process, that is governed by GS 143-129. Formal bidding is required when we are purchasing apparatus, supplies, materials, and equipment that costs $90,000 or more, or we're doing construction or repair work costing $500,000 or more. And so unlike informal bidding, formal bidding requires a lot of statutory requirements. For example, we must advertise the bid for seven days. The advertisement must state that the bid may be rejected for any good reason, as determined by the board, that's in the best interest of the unit. The bids must be sealed, and it is a Class 1 misdemeanor to intentionally open a sealed bid before the advertised time. We must receive at least three bids, or you must reject all the bids, not open any of them, and re-advertise the project. So once that project is re-advertised, we can proceed if there's just one bid. The bids must be opened in public, and in Beaufort County, we actually require that a commissioner be present. Again, just like informal bidding, with the formal bidding process, the contract shall be, by law, awarded to the lowest responsible responsive bidder, taking into consideration quality, performance, and time specified in the bid. There are a lot of other requirements with formal bidding. Contracts must be in writing. The board must approve and award the contract. And particularly with construction and repair contracts that are over that $500,000 amount, there are usually bid bond and performance bond requirements. And then we also have to encourage historically underutilized businesses, such as minority businesses and majority-owned women businesses, to participate in the bidding. And then there are always other special guidelines when we're purchasing items with federal and state grant dollars. There are actually multiple exceptions to the bidding rules and laws. One is service contracts. I don't think a lot of people realize this, but an example would be our annual audit contract. We are not required by law to bid that out. I could get on the phone, contact a CPA that I felt like was qualified, and enter into a contract with him to do our annual audit. Now, the LGC encourages that we bid out this annual contract because in doing so, that ensures that we're going to get the best qualified firm in here to do the audit at the best price, and that's what we want. So we can always go above and beyond what the law requires, and in the case of the annual audit, that's exactly what we do because we bid that out when we're not required to. Other exemptions are purchases of real property, purchases from other governmental agencies, emergencies involving the health and safety of people or their property, and then purchases made through a group purchasing program, such as the North Carolina Sheriff's Association. These are all exempt from bidding requirements. Two other exceptions that the county uses from time to time, we don't use it a lot, I would say we use it rarely, but we do use it, is sole sourcing and piggybacking. Sole source purchasing is when only one vendor is able to deliver the required product because of standardization, quality, compatibility, specifications, or availability. And interestingly enough, you have an example of that in your agenda later tonight. We are actually recommending a sole source purchase tonight, and I think we've done that twice in the three years I've been here, so it is pretty rare. Another exception is piggybacking. Piggybacking is when a federal, state, or other local government in the United States has competitively bid out the contract in the last 12 months, and as long as that vendor is willing to honor that same price for those same goods, we can piggyback on that contract and we don't have to bid that out. And then the final list of exceptions, purchases of fuels, purchase of IT equipment through contracts established by the North Carolina Department of Information Technology, guaranteed energy savings contracts, purchases of used supplies, materials, and equipment, and then lastly, purchases of goods and services directly from a nonprofit work center for the blind and disabled. Other important things to note about purchasing, it is strictly illegal to split up a project into smaller projects in order to circumvent the bidding process. That is an absolute no-no. As I mentioned, county policy and/or practices can exceed what is required by the law. In other words, our purchasing policy can be more restrictive than state law. Beaufort County's purchasing policy mirrors the state laws and guidelines, and we have the same dollar thresholds. So more specific to purchasing here in Beaufort County, we're required to follow the North Carolina General Statutes, and that's what we do. We follow them in all regards. And as I mentioned just a moment ago, our policy, our Beaufort County purchasing policy mirrors the North Carolina General Statutes. In many ways, we go above and beyond what the statutes require by getting multiple quotes on smaller contracts that are less than $30,000, by posting contracting opportunities on our website, and by actually reaching out to contractors to try to notify them by emailing them or calling them when opportunities are coming up for them. And speaking of that, if there are any contractors in Beaufort County that would like to get on the notification list, they can certainly do that by contacting our purchasing agent, Holly Jones. I have her email address and her phone number listed up on the screen, and we're happy to add you to that list.
Mr. Brandt, Commissioner Brandt.
Back on your PowerPoint tidbits for...
Yes.
Does that indicate that a contractor cannot subcontract the jobs that he's doing?
No. When we're talking about splitting... energy savings contracts, purchases of used supplies, materials, and equipment, and then lastly, purchases of goods and services directly from a nonprofit work center for the blind and disabled. Other important things to note about purchasing, it is strictly illegal to split up a project into smaller projects in order to circumvent the bidding process. That is an absolute no-no. As I mentioned, county policy and/or practices can exceed what is required by the law. In other words, our purchasing policy can be more restrictive than state law. Beaufort County's purchasing policy mirrors the state laws and guidelines, and we have the same dollar thresholds. So more specific to purchasing here in Beaufort County, we're required to follow the North Carolina general statutes, and that's what we do. We follow them in all regards. And as I mentioned just a moment ago, our policy, our Beaufort County purchasing policy mirrors the general, North Carolina general statutes. In many ways, we go above and beyond what the statutes require by getting multiple quotes on smaller contracts that are less than $30,000, by posting contracting opportunities on our website, and by actually reaching out to contractors to try to notify them, by emailing them or calling them when opportunities are coming up for them. And speaking of that, if there are any contractors in Beaufort County that would like to get on the notification list, they can certainly do that by contacting our purchasing agent, Holly Jones. I have her email address and her phone number listed up on the screen, and we're happy to add you to that list.
Mr. Brand, Commissioner Brand.
Back on your, on your PowerPoint tidbits for... Does that, does that indicate that a contractor cannot subcontract other, the jobs that we're, that he's doing?
No, no. When you, when we're talking about splitting up projects, I'm talking about the county cannot break up a project into smaller pieces just to bring it below the bidding threshold so we won't have to bid it out.
But it's not any, anything against...
Doesn't have anything to do with like a general contractor subcontracting.
Right. Okay, but it, when someone accepts a project, he can subcontract?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Commissioner Richards.
Most of our contracts state that they can only subcontract with the permission of the county. We can't give contracts and let people go out and get anybody they want to do their work for them. Do we, is that our policy?
Our policy is, I mean, I guess I was thinking of an instance like when we did this building when we were working under a GC, and he, in that case, we issue the contract to the general contractor, and then, you know, he goes out and subcontracts to other contractors. But in a case where we've awarded, yes, a contract to a certain individual, I mean, we, we would not allow him to go out and just, you know, sublet, if that's the right word, that work to somebody else. I mean, he's the person that's been awarded that contract.
I mean, of the contracts that I remember, there's usually a provision in there that says that you cannot pass this contract off to somebody else as a subcontract. You can't, can't go get somebody else to do the work once you get the bid. You're, you're the prime contractor, you're the one that's responsible, and most of what I've seen is that you submit your, your sub-list to the county because there may be subs in there that we've had bad experiences with. Is that our policy?
I, I'm not sure. I'd have to find out. Christina manages most of those contracts as the Public Works Director, and she's over maintenance of the facilities, and generally, that's when those contracts would come up. I'd have to go back and review a contract to make sure.
I'd like to get a report on this at our next meeting to be sure of what we are doing.
Stan, you come on up.
Christina's going to rescue me. Thank you. If possible, I'd rather answer everything tonight. The majority of the contracts that you're speaking about are the larger contracts, most specifically in the Water Department, and you are correct, those contracts do require that the GCs would list their subcontractors that they plan to use. That's oftentimes, that's part of their bid, so that is part of the bid evaluation that is done. Projects that are done through funding agencies, that is a requirement of almost all of the funding agencies, so the larger contracts, that is the case. Some of the, it's very difficult to talk about procurement because you're talking about items that could be from $5,000 to, you know, four million dollars. If we're talking about our HVAC service contractor that's coming in and is replacing a small boiler unit at the courthouse that's done under a service contract, there's not really documentation that says you cannot subcontract this out, but that is not historically done. The contracts that, and you speak about the county contract, the county contracts, for the most part, that is not a specific condition that's listed in the contracts that I have seen, so for the smaller items. But for the larger items, it definitely is one of the requirements that's listed. For the, the smaller items, I would say, again, it's a smaller amount, and the, we have not come across that where someone has tried to subcontract the majority of the work. For the most part, it's at least 50% of the work would need to be completed by the prime. But in the years that I've been here, that has not been an issue. Yes, sir.
You mainly speaking something as when we were boring underneath the, the river?
Yes, sir.
That, that was subcontract?
Absolutely, because for the larger projects, again, they're specialty-type work that the, the boring contractor, that's someone that only does boring work. They move around the country putting in those bores, so that's not someone that would bid on the overall project. So that's why you have the subcontracts for the larger projects, for the specialty work. Again, the renovation of the courthouse, we did that as a GC, but the spray-on fireproofing, again, was a specialty-type contract, so that portion of the work was done by a subcontractor to the GC.
Thank you, Anita.
Well, I have, I have a big question.
Go ahead, Stan.
Anita, would you be so kind, and I appreciate you doing this tonight, by the way, but would you be so kind as to send the bid requisitions and the requirements to all media sources? I understand that you do that with the Washington Daily News now. They probably charge as an advertisement, but there may be other media in the area that would do it as a service to the community. I would do it as a service to the community with Beaufort County. Now, if you would send me the entire request, all information, I will put it up, and I'm sure others would as well.
Prime?
We can certainly do that. We are required under, on their contracts, that it be advertised in a newspaper with general circulation in the, in the county.
The county, the paper of record or something like that, yeah, but...
I think as long as...
They don't reach everybody, I can tell you, especially in...
It can be very expensive. I think as long as people will want to do it for free, there should be no problem with that.
There should be no problem.
I mean, the more avenues we can use to get it out there, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Put me on your list, and probably Beaufort Observer as well. They may want it. I'm done.
Turn your mic off.
Okay, the, do you maintain discriminatory, that's a poor choice of words, list, for instance, for people who provide heating, air conditioning materials, people who supply, like office supplies, or people who supply general supplies like paper towels and toilet paper and things like that? How do you segregate the, your, the people that you contact when you're ready to purchase something?
I don't want to speak for Christina because she's right here, but I believe that she does have lists of certain contractors that have been asked to put on the list to be notified if certain opportunities come up.
It depends on the project, and again, because procurement is not just Public Works, but it's spread throughout the multi-departments of the county. Social Services has purchasing that they do, the Sheriff's Office has theirs, the Health Department has theirs, so each department would maintain a list of known people that do that. Holly keeps a track of the bid list. People that come in and drop off cards or drop off promotional material are added to that list, and that's how it's done. There's also the state purchasing, right, IPS, there's an online listing that has information for that. And a lot of it is also just general information. There's, there's not, if, if we lived in a larger metropolitan, then there would be, that information would be much more readily available, but oftentimes, it comes down to typing in a Google search to see certain contractors that provide that service in this area. So it's, it's a lot of, of known information in what you're able to get from the Yellow Pages or from Google.
Well, maybe I'm wrong with my understanding, when we hired a purchasing agent, that we were going to have a professional organization, and a part of that's professional organization, and what you're telling me is that we're still fractionated in, or factionated, whichever word you want to use, in the way that we go about purchasing, and that the right hand doesn't necessarily know what the left hand is doing. But my understanding was that the purchasing agent was going to sort of centralize this stuff, and that they, there would probably be some list that if you were purchasing certain goods, that would go out automatically to, to those vendors who had indicated that they wanted to, wanted to be on the bid list. So we're not doing that.
My response to that is that purchasing always begins at the department level. We are certainly here as a resource. We help in any way we can. We see ourselves as a service department. Finance, you know, we, we pay vendors for departments, we pay their employees. Purchasing is another aspect of that. We're willing to help with purchasing in any way we can. You have very sophisticated purchasers throughout the county, such as Christina, that's actually done it a lot longer than I have, but I'm here to help brainstorm and work through any issues that might come up, and we certainly do that with all departments. We do police it, and the way we do that is we, you know, that's through the purchase order and encumbrance system. So anytime I see a purchase order, or Holly sees a purchase order, and we see all purchase orders and sign all purchase orders, we're, we're able to know whether they're procuring an item that falls in the bidding requirements, and then we follow up and make sure that everything's been done as it needs to be done.
When you say everything's been done as it needs to be done, is that competitive pricing? If you see, if you see a purchaser come through from one department for a certain price, and it comes from another department for a radically different price, not close, what do you do?
We would reach out to the department that overpaid and said, "Do you're overpaying. There's a much better way or place to buy this from."
Have you done that?
I would say we've done that from time to time.
Yeah, give me some examples.
Do you have an example off the top of your head? I can look for examples and bring them back to you.
Well, you've already answered my question if you have to look for examples. Now, let me tell you what...
I don't have them on the top of my head.
Let me tell you, well, you should have them...
Commissioner Richardson, I sign 2,000 POs a year.
You should.
I don't have them on top of my head. I'm sorry.
You should have them because the essence of honest purchasing is keeping the pricing in line. But let me say one thing, and then I'm going to finish.
Well, let me just say this, we have a purchasing policy, and every department has a copy of that purchasing policy, and they're expected to know the policy, to follow the policy, which means they're following North Carolina general statute purchasing laws.
But you can follow the purchasing laws that I just saw up here, and they're way out in left field. My question to you is, who audits what you just described?
I audited because I sign every purchase order and review every purchase order before it goes out of here.
But you have...
And if it doesn't have my signature on it, the county does not have to pay for it.
But, but you don't have any examples. But I don't want this debate to go on because I already have the answers, and I've formed my opinion, so there's nothing that can be done at this point to change my mind. Now, let me say this...
If Commissioner Richardson, if Commissioner Richardson has formed his opinion, he's done, then we need to stop the conversation.
No, that's not up to you, Mr. Manager. It's up to the board.
I will say that, that the finance officer has responded, and you are attacking her inappropriately, and that's above this board. I mean, that's below this board.
I have, I have one more attack, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be done.
Do we need to go into closed session? Does this...
No, we don't need to go into closed session.
Ask your last question, please.
My public statement is, the complaints that I have had about purchasing are lockout complaints. That is, the vendor has said, "I have repeatedly called the county purchasing department, or purchaser, or whoever, and I can't get my set, my name on the bid list."
Okay, who's that vendor?
I don't have the names to give you right now because I, frankly, I don't remember them.
Yes, I've got my answer. If you can't come up with a name tonight...
Well, you're, you're...
I guess we're in the same room. If you can't come up with a name tonight...
As a commissioner, all I have to do is bring you the complaint, so what I'm saying is, I don't want to get any more phone calls from people who say, "I was locked out of the bid process."
All I can tell you is, we are committed to...
Anita.
We are committed to these goals.
You've answered, you've answered the question. We're good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would make one comment to the board.
Yes.
If, if any board member ever gets a call like that, please call me. It is the board's duty to let me know when those things occur, and I'll address them. So I've not received any of those phone calls, but if you, if you get those, please let me know.
I've never heard of them.
And just for the record, I've not received any of those phone calls either. Thank you very much.
Christina.
Good evening, Commissioners. A request was made to give an update on current, a couple of current capital improvement projects. The first is the Beaufort County Detention Center locking upgrade. Again, this is something we'll speak about each month. The submittal documents have been received by the county. It's a binder, inch-and-a-half binder printed like that. It's very detailed, a lot of information. Staff is currently reviewing that. Met with Beaufort County Sheriff's Office representatives last week. We had an initial review. We do have a trip planned to go and to go to a facility that currently uses the MTS system. Unfortunately, that was scheduled for this morning, and that has been, we had to postpone that due to preparations for the approaching hurricane, but we will reschedule that. Also have a meeting scheduled for this week with the Fire Marshal, again, to discuss life safety issues related to the replacement of the locking. Once that is complete, once the staff has completed the detailed review, then the information will be sent back to MTS to make corrections, and then it will be submitted to the Department of Health and Human Services for their review. Do I have any questions or comments on the Detention Center locking project?
Who prepared the submittal package?
MTS Montgomery.
Who's MTS?
Montgomery Technology Systems.
As a part of their contract? That was in addition to their contract, right?
That was a part of their contract.
Is there, is there a professional signature or seal on the, on the package?
There is not one on the package, but there will be once we finalize it and it is submitted to the Department of Health and Human Services. There's an electrical engineer, they have three that are on staff that will seal the plans.
Okay. Have, have there been any visits to our facility by the state architect that's within the Department of, that oversees this?
No, sir.
Are there any intended visits?
I do not know. I've spoken with the architect since he came back from his leave. He says, he is ready for our submittal, and he says that once he gets it, he will review it. If he has questions, he will contact us. If he feels a site visit is, is needed, then he will do that, or if not, they may just approve it. I, I just don't know until they get that before then.
Well, as a reminder, if, if a professional comes to this facility to do an inspection in any form whatsoever, whether state or private...
Yes.
I want to accompany that individual through the jail.
Duly noted, yes, sir.
And be involved in that meeting.
To my knowledge, there has not been an architect or an engineer that has visited the facility.
What is the schedule at this point in time to...
The, the, well, unfortunately, the hurricane is pushing us a little bit behind because of other duties, so the initial schedule, what we discussed in the meeting with staff, is that we were, we would do the site visit on Tuesday, meet with the Fire Marshal on Wednesday, and we were, we have a, another meeting scheduled for Friday morning at 8:00 AM to go through the submittal again, to make sure that it's as we need it to be.
Now, the submittal is of the order of a repair?
It is to the order of replacement. I, I would, it has not, it is, it will be submitted to the state as a upgrade, Beaufort County Detention Center locking upgrade is how I plan to discuss it with them, but it is very specific as far as what hardware will be removed from the facilities and what hardware will be installed in the facility.
Well, what, what hardware will be removed?
All of the existing sliding devices.
Not the doors?
Not, not the doors. The doors will be removed, retrofitted, and replaced.
Right.
So the same bar doors, the intent is those doors will be taken down, retrofitted, and then reinstalled.
Right. And the same thing is true of the control system. The control panel is going to be replaced.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're not redesigning a floor plan?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We're not changing egress or anything like that, no, sir.
All right. Thank you.
The second item is regarding the AMI, a project which is through the Beaufort County Water Department. Again, to refresh your memory, this is a project that was approved back in June of 2018. We have, all network equipment and antennas have been installed and are operational. If you're driving around Beaufort County, and if you look at the top of our elevated storage tanks, you will see the antennas that are located on many of the towers. As of, actually, I've got updated information, as of this afternoon, 7,614 meters, or 57% of the 13,250 have been installed. That's the majority of districts two, three, four, and five. To give you a little geographical reference, that is basically from Washington East on the north side of the river. So we have replaced the majority of those meters there. Now, the AMI meters are installed in those locations. Overall, the contract is scheduled to complete by the June 30th, 2020 completion date. Any questions or comments? June 30th, 2020?
Commissioner Waters.
Christina, I guess some of the newer meters have been out there long enough that you're already using that for billing purposes?
Yes, sir, every month.
Any, any particular problems at this point in time?
There've been a few isolated incidents. I mean, any type, any time you're replacing 7,600 meters, there have been a few issues, but the customer service agents, as well as the Beaufort County operations staff, if there is an issue, a truck is dispatched, and they go out and look at it, and look at it. Again, there's a lot of information passing back and forth between two different computer systems, so there have been some instances. But overall, I believe it has been a very smooth transition. Even the customer service reps say that it has been better than what they anticipated. Even the customer service reps say that it has been better than what they anticipated. And I think overall, it is changing the way that we are doing business. This past year, excuse me, this past month, we actually had an issue with the scheduling of a training event and due to the AMI meters, we had some flexibility being able to move, move things around because it's not such a rush to get the, over 8,000 meters read in two weeks.
Thank you.
What would you say your, your rework rate is for the meters?
The rework as far as them having to go back and replace meters that are-
No, not replace, but you've installed a new electronic device. So, what is the rework rate to go back and get all of the devices working? What percentage?
Of 7,600 meters, would you say, Eric, less than 100?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Okay, we're moving on to public comments. Ms. Mesh?
Good evening, Chairman Evans, Commissioners. I wish, thank you. I wish for safety for everyone during this storm. Commissioner Richardson, concerning the August meeting-
Let's understand something. You're not here to attack Commissioners. That's in our rules for your presentation. However, I'm willing to give you permission to attack. Go forward.
I have to commend you. Thank goodness I got my four minutes tonight. In your eff, and I wish for your safety as well during the storm. In your efforts to draw down the number of people in our jail, for your comments about the trend across the U.S. to get people out of prisons as well, and for your saying mentally ill people shouldn't be in the jail, maybe I misheard you. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm leaning in tonight. For a split second, it sounded as though you were going to share an epiphany on jail reform. An epiphany is what we need here, one that will bring us to a consensus about our jail. The epiphany being we cannot structurally fix what is causing our legal jail problems and we must figure out what to do about it. Whenever asked what my interest in the jail is, I give the same answer. Beaufort County put me on grand jury duty and with that, I had to tour the jail. I cannot unsee what I saw in that jail and I could not go home and wallow in what I call my own sin of silence. Deplorable is what I most recently heard about our jail. I also want you to hear what was said to me recently from two people who've spent time in our jail. The first saying, "They throw you in there with no hope and they don't believe in rehabilitation." The second stating, "There is no ventilation, so when someone comes in there sick, we are all going to be, get sick. There's no daylight, no fresh air, no place to exercise. You will take any deal they throw you just to get out. They need to tear that place down." Is this what we in Beaufort County consider fair treatment and fairness in our justice system? We sit here in privilege and complacency. Privilege in taking for ourselves the right to put others at greater disadvantage than they already are. Collectively holding harmful power over others' lives while they wait for due process. Complacency in allowing for the last 20 years, the true issues of the jail to be tangential or irrelevant to politics. Cultivating tax fears instead of making long-term planning for a new jail with sound funding structures. Complacency when we believe it better to keep the dime in our pockets. We should have collected over the years to build a new jail and not think twice about the reckoning of our own behavior. Reform in the U.S. is about addressing trends. Response to opioid addiction, the mentally ill, the economically disadvantaged, for those who need treatment instead of more punishment. Yes, we need less people in jail, but we also need a facility that doesn't cause more harm like the one we have now. We have a serious problem faced, Chairman Langley. Please keep the jail on the agenda for discussion. It's time we have a dialogue about the power we wield over the disadvantaged human beings in our jail. As we choose to be neglectful in doing our job for all the people in Beaufort County, it's time to give a reasonable explanation on why we think we have the right. As we get closer to the time of approval for the repair project of putting shiny new doors in our sorry jail, we must now prepare for hurricane flooding, evacuations and cleanup of the jail. Yet another step in the misery we choose to put upon the misery of the jail. What do we care? Who cares? Just more privilege and power and complacency for us. What about staff sent to transport evacuees during these times? What do we care about the staff leaving behind a pregnant wife or any parents leaving behind young children? What do we care about anyone's well-being? No amount of hazard pay to those we forced to work beyond what we would be, what would be a normal flood-free facility could never make up for our dereliction, our failure to find a resolution for our chronic entrenchment, our refusal to move away from a repetitive knee-jerk response to our jail problems, to working out a value-driven, effective, well-thought-out replacement effort we can all feel responsible for or at least agree to accept. We need to take to higher ground literally and figuratively to continue the way we are going with disregard for any moral consciousness, let alone the enormity of any cost adds more absurdity on top of the absurdity we've been cultivating for the last 20 years. How can any of us think we are unburdened? It's time to put perspective on what is really going on here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
I'm here tonight to let the sheriff, the people of Beaufort County know that we're still seeking justice, accountability and answers for Cory Anderson's death. Since I was here last, my sister has gone and had the opportunity to talk with the sheriff, finally, and Chief Rose. Cory's dad and I have been asking for over two years now to meet with the sheriff. He will not. My sister had gone to ask, "Please tell us why you didn't call." He said, "There's no SOP to notify the emergency contacts every time an inmate is seen at the hospital." I understand that. All cases are not emergencies. The sheriff said an inmate may be seen for a bump on the head, for instance, and sent back to jail. Cory's condition was very serious. He was admitted to ICU. In fact, Chief Rose told us in May of 2017 that he knew it was bad from the very beginning. The sheriff said he was being updated and notified of Cory's condition, that the communication was going up and back down the chain of command, he said. Cory's condition was getting worse. In the sheriff's words, Cory began to crash. In other words, Cory began to die. The sheriff said at one point in the conversation with my sister that he didn't want to call was why, was the reason that he didn't call. When he said that, Chief Rose quickly spoke up and said, "You're being facetious." Was he serious or was he really being facetious? He said it. Either way, it's not appropriate in any way, shape or form from an elected official or a sheriff. The sheriff also reminded my sister that he did get reelected and that 99% of the people thought we were making total fools of ourselves. So be it. And that he was tired of the BS. That's what he referred to as all this stuff surrounding Cory's death is BS, as he referred to it as that. This is not only inappropriate talk to my sister that way, to talk to her that way, but it's also unprofessional and uncaring. Again, my sister would ask in the conversation, "Why didn't you call? As a person, as a human being, not just as a sheriff, why didn't you call? You know Cory needed his family. He told her he could have called. He went on to say, "There ain't a doubt shout call policy anywhere. He didn't have to call by law. He didn't have to call mama, daddy, brother or sister. He didn't have to call nobody. He said he would do the same thing all over again. He told her that we're mentally and emotionally unstable and that we need to see a psychiatrist." I've been here enough that you know, we know, and the sheriff knows that this is really not the truth. It's just a diversion from the truth. The sheriff went on to say before she left that he was done with us, that we're dead in the water. "Don't come back here to my office no more," he said. He said he was glad to get this off his chest and have the opportunity to finally talk to my sister, that we had put him through enough. These are his words and they are wrong on so many levels. So, what are we gonna do? We're gonna continue to pray. We're gonna continue to work for justice, accountability and answers because this should have never happened to Cory. It should never happen to any other inmate or their family. There must be change before this happens again. The things that I was speaking to you tonight are the, are the truth and nothing but the truth. As I said, these were the sheriff's words and we felt like that you and the public and the sheriff want to hear this tonight. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank God for the opportunity to speak again on Cory's behalf because as we all know, he is no longer able to speak for himself.
Johnny?
Yes, sir.
When did you have this discussion?
When, um, on the 17th of this month. My sister had this discussion-
Of August?
With the sheriff, August the 17th.
This is pretty reliable?
Yes, it is reliable, absolutely. I can prove everything that I've said tonight. You can hear it again.
I'm the one that had the conversation.
She had it.
It was July the 17th.
Send that to me, that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And may I, and Chief Rose would say, and if I said anything that's untrue, and he could speak up and say so now, he knows it's the truth.
We're now into items for consent.
Motion to approve.
It is second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove item two, item three and item 13.
You want to discuss them again? Is what you want? You want to put them in item for decision?
Oh, yeah, they need to go under item-
Okay, they're all good. They'll come in that same order. Where number one moves down and then two, three and 13 will be the first three items we'll discuss. Yeah, all right. Got a, we got a, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please lay your right hands to revise consent agenda. How many hands, how many opposed?
You're voting to revise the consent agenda.
I mean, I'm sorry, the agenda.
You're voting on the consent agenda.
Right, right.
Okay, well, I'm voting against the consent agenda.
Okay.
Wait, I thought the vote was-
You still didn't know it.
I thought the, the vote was to take Hood's items off to discuss later. Okay.
You ain't got to vote for consent all night.
All right, all right, all right.
You take off.
I have to. Okay, we're down to items for decision. Hood, you want to go over number two?
Number two?
Well, then number two needs to be presented in order to go over it, so whoever's voted present it, needs to present it. I'm not gonna present it for them. I'm gonna vote against it. If it's up to me at one point, you can come up.
Chairman, Commissioners?
I believe number two is for vehicles and specifically vehicles that are above 30,000 in unit price. So, for us, we're, we're purchasing 10 vehicles this year and of that, five of those vehicles are at the 30,000 level but, but above. The vehicles in question are gonna be two pickups, two Ford pickups, a Tahoe and two Durangos. The pickups are about $35,000. The Tahoe's about $35,000 and the Durangos are, I believe, slightly under $31,000. So, they were approved in the budget, but since it is over $30,000, they have to come back after, as the purchase order are requested, for reapproval by the Commissioners before the purchases are made.
You have a question, Frankie?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the purchase orders and contracts that was in our consent agenda.
So moved. Second?
Questions?
All right, any discussion?
Oh, yeah. Lot of discussions.
Okay. Number one, why do we need to purchase luxury vehicles for the sheriff's department?
I don't believe of the 70-plus vehicles that we have at the sheriff's office that we have a luxury vehicle.
Sir, we're talking about the purchases. We're talking about this item. We're not talking about the whole sheriff's department.
Okay, well, sheriff's office, but thank you. You, you said vehicles and luxury vehicles. There's not a luxury vehicle in the five that you have. And just for reference and general notion for the public understanding is that since you're making a vague statement, I was gonna give more of a clear answer.
Well, what are these vehicles gonna be used for?
For law enforcement purposes.
What are law enforcement purposes? Are they gonna go on patrol? Are they, how are they gonna be used? Who will they be assigned to?
They're gonna be assigned to deputies, law enforcement officers, that are gonna be doing law enforcement tasks. Like, there may be something that comes later on this week that we use four-wheel-drive vehicles and high clearance vehicles to operate in times where water is up and we've got to get to areas within the county that are wet and soggy that you can't do with a sedan or an economy vehicle, I guess if that's the reference, that we need to be driving economy vehicles for, for doing our work purposes. But, you know, in, in 2014, when the sheriff became the sheriff, we had only two or three four-wheel-drive vehicles, high clearance vehicles. And I'll give an example, back in 2011, we, our fleet looked about the same. And during Irene, we could do very little. In fact, we did very little. I was a sergeant at the time and I was actually pretty embarrassed about the level of operations and performance that we can do as an office and me personally as a law enforcement officer because we didn't have the correct equipment to get the job done. So, it was one of my personal deals when the sheriff became the sheriff and he asked me in the role that I was, what was one of the priorities that I had and it was one of the priorities was to get our fleet so we could serve the citizens of Beaufort County at all times, to include times where we've got hurricanes and storms that are there. And over the next five years, including now, we've been able to do that to the point that the last handful of named storms that we've had, we've never stopped. We never stopped responding. We never stopped going out, no matter how bad the conditions were, and we could do that because of the equipment that we have purchased with the support of the Commissioners. And I will give one example, an example couldn't be thought of earlier in a finance officer's presentation, but the procurement of vehicles through the Sheriff's Association, what was brought up between conversations between our office and finance because we were able to get vehicles at better rates than the state contracts we could in most of the situations. So, that's just one example from earlier that wasn't brought up, but that saves hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars each time.
Mr. Rose, let's get back on the subject.
Okay.
Okay, who are these vehicles gonna be assigned to when they come in?
To deputies.
To, not to sergeants, not to corporals, they're gonna be assigned to patrol deputies.
Sergeants and corporals are deputies.
Are they patrol deputies?
There's, the, the vehicles that we're gonna talk about tonight, as far as this, two would be for the drug unit. One is a replacement vehicle for the sheriff so I can use his vehicle for something else. Lieutenant Brian's gonna receive a different vehicle so I don't have to give her my vehicle in storms. And then her vehicle's gonna be used as a school resource officer vehicle. And then the last vehicle is gonna be in the criminal investigations division and we use utility vehicles for that purpose so they can carry all of their gear and equipment around and not have to call anybody else to them or have to make multiple trips when they should be doing their job when they're on.
Why does the jailer need a personal vehicle from the county?
Well, it's not a personal vehicle. It's gonna be a patrol vehicle.
Why does she need a patrol vehicle?
Lieutenant Brian is, is a veteran law enforcement officer. She is a jail administrator, but she's also run the criminal investigations unit in Dare County for the sheriff's office. She has been called out in homicide scenes to assist. She was called out in officer-involved shootings to assist. She carries gear. She's a law enforcement officer. She needs the equipment so she can do her job. During the storm, she's gonna be, she is a senior command staff level of the sheriff's office. She is gonna be not just needed, but required to do tasks, that she needs to have equipment so she can do those things.
Well, let's see now. Her prime responsibility is, is jailer?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, how many, how much work does she do that's not as a jailer? How many hours a year do you figure that she's doing duties other than the jail?
Enough that she needs to have the equipment to do the job.
How much is enough?
I guess, I cannot quantify it. I guess, I cannot quantify it, it's more than a little but less than too much. And during this week, when all of the inmates are going to be out of the jail, she's going to be responsible for taking care of other tasks.
So these vehicles are additions to the fleet, is that not correct?
No, they're replacements of vehicles that we already have. Two or three of these vehicles are going to, I'm going to be able to use in its next life in another position, like as an SRO vehicle or for a surveillance vehicle, but two of the vehicles that are, is going to be replaced are going to be surplus because of high mileage.
So no one is going to be assigned a vehicle, that hasn't had a vehicle up till now?
That's correct.
All right. Now, I have one question that I observed today. Why does an SRO officer need a vehicle that is a, a crew cab truck that can haul six people plus be in a truck? Why do they, why do they need something like that?
Vehicles that we purchase, we use them for multi-functional. The, the vehicle might be used now as an SRO vehicle that's marked and carries gear around, but then next year, that might be an unmarked surveillance vehicle that we use for other tasks. The reason that we like crew cabs is because we carry a lot of stuff around with us. And if you have a regular cab, then you're going to have to have some sort of box on the back or a cover on the back or something that to carry all of your gear, and it's just, uh, it's, it's, we can use those vehicles for more purposes and we need as much utility as we can. Four-door vehicles, I can fit four or five deputies into a vehicle. We can drive right up to a house, and if we've got a warrant, we can extract that person, and usually they're in our vehicle getting handcuffed before they even know that we were there. And it's, it's more difficult to put four or five deputies into a regular cab vehicle.
How often does that happen?
More often than you would ever-
How many times a year do you need to do that?
Several dozen to a hundred or so.
A hundred? Every three days, you're raiding a house somewhere in Beaufort County with a squad of deputies?
Yeah, I used to send you-
See, that's surprising.
I used to send you press releases, but you need to find that out by watching WITN with our drug charges.
That's, uh, that, that is really surprising that you guys are doing that much based upon the number of people that are in jail.
Well, there's plenty reasons that people aren't in jail, and most of those are because of the situation that we've had for years. But we've arrested people for breaking into thirty houses in your neighborhood, and they get an unsecured bond because of the efforts that you're doing to keep people out of the jail. So good job on that.
Well, we need to be, we need to be getting the people out of jail because putting people in jail and keeping them in there six months, we have one guy that's been in there since two thousand and sixteen, and he doesn't even have a trial date set.
But to your point of keeping things on point, maybe we can-
All right, let's go back to the- Hang on, Mr. Brand has a question, then we'll come back to you. Okay.
Uh, Chief, if you go to, I know we don't buy cars locally, but if you go through the state to buy a, a regular patrol car, what do you normally pay for it?
Through the state? Yeah, we, we've seen that it's anywhere from a couple hundred dollars less going through the Sheriff's Association than the state bid contract, up to a thousand or two, just depending on what specs you're picking for the vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Based on the question he just asked you, you telling me a patrol car costs thirty-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
For the basic car? That's all you're buying here is a basic car? You're not buying an equipped car?
You're going to need to describe what basic car means to me, because if the comparison is what we drive compared to what you drive, then there's no comparison.
Well, that's correct, because I get my money's worth out of my cars, I'm not wasteful like a lot of government officials are.
Yeah.
And while we're on that subject-
You also don't have to do the tasks that we do on a daily basis to get our job done.
Did I pick out that the sheriff's getting a new vehicle out of this?
Mr. Chairman, I called for a question.
This is, this is already been approved in the budget. This is important to the people of Beaufort County, buying luxury vehicles. Get done. I need enough time to ask the questions. Ask one more question, can you do that one? Oh, gee, no, I'm not asking any more questions. If I'm being limited in my questioning because I was elected as a commissioner to look after the people of this county, and five of you are sitting here not doing that. You know, go for it. Do I understand the sheriff's getting a new vehicle out of this? That's what you implied a minute ago.
No, I mean, it's not an implication, it's my recommendation, based on the fleet that we have, that the sheriff gets another vehicle so I can use the vehicle that he is in in another capacity.
Then my question to you is, who's running the sheriff's department? You're the sheriff.
Oh, it's, it's no question, the sheriff is running the sheriff's office, and it's an operation that he delegates other things to that, and I was delegated that, that job.
All those in favor, moving on? All those in favor, raise your right hand. The motion, there's a motion.
You got to say what you're voting on. You said two things.
You said moving on, and then you said the motion. Jerry, you, you need to get, no, you need to be specific, you're the chairman, they're following your lead on the vote.
So the double dealing.
We're going to take a recess, thank you. We're back in session, uh, so we're back to item number two, to our here motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the trucks, cars, and the thirty-nine body worn cameras that's approved in the budget.
Sir.
Mr. Chairman, discussion? We've had discussion. No, sir, we haven't, that's a new motion. When we went out, the other motion died, and when it dies, that's a new motion. How much, how much time you think you- I'm just going to give a little summary. How long must time you think you- About two minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I call for a question. We've already had discussions on it.
We've had discussions, sir. No, you haven't had discussions. That's a new motion, the old motion died. Why did you have to make a new motion if it wasn't a new motion? Well, if you took recess. Jerry, here we are again, playing the word games. Now, if you made a motion, the, the, our rules say there's always discussion after the motion, so which is it? You want to throw the rulebook out?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say one thing.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'm going to vote against the census, I vote against the budget, and I, I do think it's a lot of money that we're spending needlessly right now. Also, let's go by our rules, we have rules to be followed, let's do it. Give him two minutes, okay? Thanks.
You got two minutes, go ahead. I just want the record to show I'm entitled to two minutes, nobody gave me two minutes. My summary on this is, I can't vote for buying luxury vehicles for any department in the county. The sheriff's department is loaded up with luxury vehicles, the average mileage on the vehicle, when we did the budget, was fifty thousand miles. This is wasteful, it's county money that's being wasted and thrown away. Uh, I saw a school resource officer today with a crew cab that seats six and was, and was one of those truck deals, whatever it's called. We don't need to be doing this, we need to be buying patrol vehicles, we're in the patrol business, law enforcement providing business, not in the providing vehicles to people to use for personal use, which the sheriff has already taken the position that he can allocate these vehicles for personal use if he so desires, and he cannot do that. There is a state law that is specifically against that. So this is another excessive waste of county money. These vehicles weren't put in the budget as vehicles, it was a four-hundred-thousand-dollar allocation for sheriff's vehicles. And one more thing while I'm finishing, and I've asked for the information two months ago, and it still hasn't come to me. The sheriff was going to put more people, more people on patrol, so he needed more vehicles in order to do that with. I asked for the new organization chart two months ago, and I still don't have the new organization chart. So as far as I'm concerned, when it comes to getting information out of the sheriff's department, he is running a secret police organization, and he needs to come clean, and the public needs to know a whole lot more about what's going on in the sheriff's
Can I make a comment about vehicles then? There's no addition to vehicles? I mean, it's just a flat-out lie that he just said.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, put the back to five two. I'm sorry, I'm sorry about it. We're now, motion was approved, you get that, Katie? Motion passed, okay. We're under item number three for decision, sorry about that.
The purchase order, carry forward? Yes, I had that under consent, this is something that happens every year. In a perfect world, you know, it's just like when you write a check to somebody, you hope it clears by the end of the month, so you won't have any outstanding or reconciling items when you balance your checkbook, but unfortunately, we don't live in a perfect world, so these projects were not completed at June thirtieth. Those funds that were not spent rolled up into fund balance at June thirtieth. We only have five of them this year, I was, I thought that was pretty amazing that we got all the projects done except for five, so we need to take that money that rolled up into fund balance and reappropriate it so that those projects can be completed in this new fiscal year, and we can pay the vendors when it's complete.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion?
Second.
You got a second?
Discussion.
Got discussion.
Sir.
Okay, discussion. The, the items that are listed on, looking at page thirty-three, uh, all, all of those items total sixty-one thousand four, four hundred eighty-two dollars.
Uh, no. I would look at the list on page thirty-two. It's broken down by fund, general fund has three projects that total eighty-six thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cent. Solid Waste has one project, that's the Ransomeville Wetlands permit, that's eight thousand dollars. And then the Water Districts, they have one project, which is the outstanding state permits that are under revision, four thousand dollars.
So, so the revenue for the wetlands and the revenue for the water department is going to come out of water department, and the, the fund is set up for solid waste, so that's where that's coming from.
That's right.
Is the rest of that going to come from the, from the general fund?
Uh, let me take this opportunity to explain to you how a budget amendment works. If you look at page thirty-three, the second part of that, if you'll see the Fund eighty-one, the two items listed for eight thousand dollars, that is where we are appropriating eight thousand dollars in unspent fund balance to pay for that Ransomeville Wetland permit under Contract Services. Just beneath that, you will see Fund sixty, two lines listed there. You'll see appropriated fund balance for a thousand dollars, where we are taking unspent money from June thirtieth, appropriating it to Contract Services to pay for those state permits. Now, go up to the very top, to the general fund, where you'll see, one, two, three, four, five items listed. The first two are revenue items, let's skip those and go down to the bottom three. The third item is capital outlay for buildings, eighteen thousand two fifty-one, that's to complete the card reader system security upgrade in this building. The next item, school planning, I think you're all aware that the school planning is not complete, we had to go back and get that height report for them, which we just received from the school system today, so that thirty-two thousand six hundred dollars is appropriated for that. Then underneath that, you have the bike plan. Unfortunately, that was not completed June thirtieth, so we have thirty-five thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars that's got to be appropriated to be spent to complete that project. Now, those three items are the expenditures, then we have to ask ourselves, how are we going to pay for that? And the way we pay for is, the bike plan is part grant, it's a seventy-thirty grant, seventy percent grant, thirty percent county share, so we're going to receive revenue from the NC Department of Transportation for twenty-four thousand eight oh seven to pay for that, part of that thirty-five thousand four thirty-eight. The balance, ten thousand six thirty-one, has got to be paid by the county. So if you take the ten thousand six thirty-one, add to it the eighteen thousand two fifty-one for the security here in this building, and the school plan of thirty-two six, that's the sixty-one thousand four eighty-two.
Okay, okay, but the funds that the county is going to pay are, they're going to reduce the fund balance?
By sixty-one thousand four eighty-two in the general fund.
That will be the, the fund balance as it is today?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, and, and item ten, the, when you say call center ten, that's for the general fund?
That's right.
Call center eighty-one, that's for, um-
Solid Waste.
Okay, and call center sixty is for water?
Correct.
All right, okay, that answers my questions on that. I'm glad to hear you say that we've had fewer of these than we've ever had before, because what came up in the budget last year was that we needed to reduce the number of these, and it looks like that's what the county has done, is reduce the number of these. And I really think we should go to a, a harder cutoff, it gives us a lot better control in budgeting, if this year, we can reduce this number to an even smaller amount.
We, we have a very firm cutoff every year, um, in mid-April, we cut off spending, it, it's just not a perfect world. I mean, I wish the NC State could have finished the school planning study, that's really a project between the commissioners and NC State. However, it wasn't done at June thirtieth, so we're required, we're obligated by contract to pay for that when they are done, so we have to appropriate money for that in the current year to pay it when, once they are finished.
As an aside, when do we expect that to be finished?
As I mentioned, they, we received the height study today from the schools, so we will be forwarding that to NC State, and beyond that, I'm not sure how long it will take them to review that study and update their report.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Time to vote, all those in, we have the motion, right? Good, I can make sure. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, seven zero. Okay, well, are we down to number thirty-two or whatever it is?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Hello?
The twenty-twenty- The twenty-twenty Census Bureau is requesting that you approve this resolution, they're requesting that of all counties throughout the United States, and I put it on the agenda for that purpose.
Second.
Okay, okay.
The last part of this, as, and for those of you that don't know, there's been a tremendous brouhaha that's been in the federal courts about doing the census.
Turn this thing on. About doing the census. And the brouhaha is over, if you count every person, should you count every person? Because the census is used for allocating certain grant funds, certain social funds from the federal government, and for determining the number of representatives that you have in a particular district. So it gets to be a, a big deal thing. Take a state like California, where Los Angeles is probably sixty or seventy percent illegal as an example. And the question arose, and has been pushed by some people, that you need to count, even if they are illegal, you need to count them, and that those are the numbers that need to be used in apportioning grant funds and, and in apportioning the number of people in the House of Representatives from a particular district. The wording on the, therefore be it resolved on this caught my eye because it says, therefore be it resolved, the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners proclaims Beaufort County is committed to partnering with U.S. Census Bureau to help ensure full and accurate count of the twenty-twenty census. Now, my question is, what is the full and accurate count of the twenty-twenty census?
The response that I've gotten, because I asked the same question, knowing it would probably come up, was that my understanding is the courts have approved counting everybody, whether they be a natural U.S. citizen or not. So it means count everybody, cradle to grave.
Very well, I cannot support this amendment. Well, well, unless you tell me that we're going to segregate the numbers so that we know who is illegal and that the people that are illegal are not entitled to representation anyway because they're illegal, is that the case?
My understanding is that we are not going to be asking that question.
Okay, thank you, I can't support this, it is unconstitutional.
Mr. Chairman? Thanks, may I speak? I remember just a few months ago, we had the representative from the Census Bureau, and I asked a few questions, she couldn't answer any of them. And did you get your answers from that same person, somebody else? Okay. Uh, if you read the Constitution, which we were all sworn to defend, you'll see that the census is devised for one thing and one thing only, the apportionment of who gets whom or how many in the House of Representatives. And that number changes from time to time as we added more states, but that's the only reason we have a census, and it was determined that you should do it as per citizens and citizens only. Counting illegals is not a true census, so Hood, when Hood called this unconstitutional, he was a hundred percent accurate. This is unconstitutional for us to, uh, be so resolved to agree to something we do not have the answers to. So I, I mean, if you want to defend what you were sworn to defend, which is the Constitution of the United States, you will have to vote against this, all of us.
I'm getting ready to show you.
Well, good, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Waters?
When you, the last census report we had, I got called two different times. I put the number of people that were in the household, and I signed my name, and I sent it in, and they called and they wanted all kinds of information. I said, I've told you everything that you've got to know. You don't have to know what my sex is, what my color is, what my education is, and how many bathrooms I have in my house.
That's right.
That's right.
But, that's all you have to do. So you tell me how you're going to separate the ones that are legal and illegal. We're counting the number of people. So if you sign it, and you just state how many people's living there, and that's it, that's what a lot of people do. Most people don't give all that information.
Sure, go ahead.
Well, if, if we start at putting legals and illegals on the same basis, we're starting at a deficit. We really need to consider who is a citizen in this nation, and what that means. And if we agree to something that doesn't define that, we are tacitly endorsing that. So I think we, we need to be careful how we, uh, be resolved to adopt something that has been put before us by people who really don't care about the Constitution of the United States of America. Supreme Court would not endorse this. This is not endorsed by the Supreme Court, I can tell you that right now.
We'll call the question.
Okay, let's vote. All of those in favor, raise your right hand, please. All those opposed? Four three, motion passes. Mr. Hedgepath and Mr. Lassiter.
Chairman Evidents and Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to come speak on behalf of the animal shelter. We were requested at our last animal shelter advisory meeting. Our advisory meeting is the group meeting where we have our representatives of rescue groups, Humane Society, all of those that help in partnering in getting animals out of the shelter together. Their request, I'm not going to read it to you, because you have it in your packet, but their request specifically was about dropping what we call the rescue pull fees. What pull fees are, just for quick review, when an animal is picked up out of the shelter, there's a cost associated with that to cover the, the dewarmer, the rabies shots, the, the different things that are given, and a microchip for the animal. Currently, rescues get a reduced rate on that from our shelter. The pull rate is twenty dollars. They have asked recently for us to assist them in getting animals out, and to drop that fee. Examples were given to us from surrounding counties. Some counties have dropped fees altogether. Some have stopped giving the shots and dropping fees. Some have dropped to a lesser rate. The request of this is due to the rescue groups are going and seeking these animals. They're raising funds to pay for that twenty-dollar fee. They're struggling in raising funds today. Still raising funds, they're still doing good work, but they're unable to raise the same amount of funds. So in that, we have a good partnership in Beaufort County with, with this going on through our group. They're asking for this fee to be reduced, so they don't have to look elsewhere. We really don't want them to look elsewhere, because if the animals don't go out of our shelter, then we end up spending money in a, in a different way that we just don't want to be able to do. So the request is to drop the twenty-dollar pull fee. I told them we would be glad to bring that before you, our policymakers. It was not something that Chief Lassiter or myself could approve. It had to be something that would go before you. We are requesting in that, if you see, um, the, the shots that are put in there, and the microchip, it's a cost of us for about fifteen dollars in actual material plus labor. What we would do, if you approve dropping the rescue pull fee, is we would no longer microchip the animal. Microchip doesn't have to do with the health of the animal, it has to do, if the animal's found later, it can be scanned, and the property owner information is, is in a microchip implanted in, under the skin of the animal. So with this, we would no longer do that, because rescues could take care of that themselves, and that would drop the price, six dollars and twenty-five cent of what our actual cost is. Looking at the numbers of rescues a year, last year, two thousand eighteen, was five hundred and three. I think specific, we were saying five hundred, but I think it was five hundred and three specific of, of, what was it, Chief Lassiter? Twelve hundred, thirteen hundred animals total that went... Twelve forty-three that went out, either in adoptions, transfers to a foster program, or returned to their owner. So it is a big number of animals that go out. Ms. Anita did run the numbers, you know, because this is a income that comes in, not to us, but into the General Fund, any fee structure. And the total, if you figure five hundred times twenty dollars, that's ten thousand dollars. You reduce the microchip cost of that, then you're going to lose an income total coming into the county currently of just under seven thousand dollars. We believe, even though we're losing that money, that if our rescues do diminish, we're going to end up spending that money on the back end in another service that we really don't want to do. So we are coming before you now, on their request, just to drop that fee.
Mr. Brown?
So, I adopted an animal two years ago, and I think I wound up spending seventy or eighty dollars, something like that, for the adoption, is that correct? Some, somewhere in that vicinity.
Seventy-five dollars for it.
Seventy-five dollars, right. So, what is it going to cost now to adopt an animal, with these new fees taken out?
That cost will be the same.
It, it would not adjust, it would not adjust the public coming in and doing animal adoption.
But when you go to the vet and area and have spayed or neutered, and you have that chip, and you got to pay for that yourself? Is that correct?
We're referring to the rescue pulls.
Yeah, this particular, see, we have...
You did an, yeah, you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You did an adoption, and at that time, it's microchipped and taken to the vet.
I'm confused, and what's the difference in adoption and pull?
Adoption is the general public comes in, they look through the facility, they say, I need that dog, he's got to go home with me.
That's what I did.
Right, you, so you adopted that dog. There is a fee structure for that, I think seventy-five dollars that you pay for that. And then you get, you get certain shots of the animal. Anything more than that, you carry to the vet, and you pay the vet of your choice to, to take care of that.
Right.
Rescues, what rescues do, is they come and pull animals, and they have a network of, of volunteers, and, and some pay, but it's mostly a volunteer system, where they may pull, many animals come out of our shelter, and they end up in, in New York, Massachusetts, all over the place. It is just finding a home for the animal.
I got you.
Okay.
Commissioner, please.
Maybe I missed it. You said, when, if we go along with this program, that we're going to drop this, this uh, fee for the chip, is that correct?
We would drop the fee for the chip at six twenty-five and...
And then, and then the, uh, rescues will take that over?
They, they, if they determine for the animal to be microchipped, they would then pay for that somewhere else.
Who control, like, we're charging fifteen dollars now. Who control what the rescuers can charge John Q. Public, if they want that, that...
There is no control. I mean, there is no governing agency of that.
And that's the part that bothers me.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we're charging fifteen dollars, and we want, yes, and us to drop that, and let the rescuers have it, which is fine. But they could go out, go back out, they're already looking for money elsewhere. They could go back out now and say, we're going to charge thirty dollars for this chip, where we're just charging fifteen dollars. Is that true?
We're, for clarification, ours is twenty. Our cost is fifteen dollars plus labor. So we're charging them twenty dollars.
Okay.
But yes, that is technically true, they could do that. I would just say, on, on their behalf, I'll, I'll speak for the positive relationship we have. If we were to look in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, we had a twenty-six percent, um, adoption rate, which means we had a seventy-four percent euthanasia rate. And if you look to where we've been in two thousand eighteen, two thousand eighteen was sixty, sixty... It was sixty, it was actually, I think, sixty-one percent.
Two thousand eighteen, if you go back.
I'm sorry, seventy-one percent.
So we've gone sixty-eight?
So, so the rescues do help us get animals out?
We understand that.
Okay.
We understand that. We don't, that's what, not what we're questioning, getting them out.
Yes.
What, what other counties doing? If, I mean, when it comes down to paying for the chip, if there's no regulation, what, what can you say, well, we can't let you go over thirty dollars? What, what, what other counties doing?
The, the microchip, the reason we see it, and I hope I'm answering your question, the microchip, the reason we said we can do away with that, is that does not change the health of the animal. We thought about dropping all of the, the deworming charges, those things, but it actually could change the healthy outcome of the animal, we didn't want to do that.
Well, is the rescuers going, going to pick up doing the chips?
There's no mandate to have a chip, so it would be their choice. There, there's no agency that says you have to or have not.
Okay, so if they use that, if they use that as a funding source, what's in place to regulate what they can charge?
I don't know of anything that, that's in place for that.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Is there a motion? Your second?
Sir?
You got a second? All of those in favor, raise your right hand. All of those opposed? Six one, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Let's see, what we got up here next?
I am the next item as well.
You're up there, okay.
All right, I stand before you on a, a different hat today, now getting in emergency management. We were approached by Cliff Harville and his group from the United, uh, I call them the United Methodist Relief Effort, but their official name is under the United Methodist Church. They approached us, first let me say that they're one of our leaders in our long-term recovery. They're operating out of our county, but they service numerous counties around us, and that long-term effort is going in and helping from past storms. In fact, they're still doing a lot of work. These, these particular trailers that we're going to be talking about are questioned from, I think, last year's storm to provide housing. So they needed to, to, to get a temporary housing, and, and when we say temporary, the, the thought really here is days to up to, to two or three weeks, to give someone who's in a damaged home, who's living in a damaged home from Hurricane Florence or previous disasters, a temporary place to stay, so they can go in and help make the repairs of their home. In doing this, they have looked at purchasing these, these campers themselves, they, they really worked out the deal, um, through North Carolina Emergency Management, and through the, the United States Government to get. But nonprofits have to go through the bidding process, and every time they go through the bidding process, the bid is getting up, upset. So the other thing is, with them being a nonprofit, sometimes the quickness of the bidding process doesn't allow them to get their funds together. So they approached us under a partnership, if, if county could purchase these ten units, it's ten campers or ten travel trailers, at a, at a agreed upon cost of five thousand dollars apiece. Counties have the ability to do that with GSA. And, and we have funneled this through. Their request is, if we'll purchase it, they'll, they'll pay us for those, and we would transfer the property to them. So we wanted to make sure, first of all, is that legal tender? Is it something we could do? Both Manager Ali Good and Ms. Anita have gone through both purchasing policies, and we've talked with North Carolina Emergency Management through lawyers of North Carolina and FEMA lawyers. And everybody says that this is an approved process for us to go. So with that in mind, we're asking for your approval for the county to purchase, purchase ten travel trailers at five thousand dollars apiece, with the sole intent that we would reallocate this property to the United Methodist Church. They would, upon your acceptance, would go ahead and give the county fifty thousand dollars, five thousand apiece for it, would be deposited in our account. There is a stipulation after we purchase, and Anita help me with this if, if I get off, that for us to transfer property to a nonprofit, which is what we would be doing, there is either a nine or ten day advertisement that has to take place, just saying what our intent is. So we'd have to wait ten days while that advertisement took place, and then we'd be able to transfer the property back to them.
So, so you're basically talking about pass through?
It's an in and out, yes.
So move. So move.
Second, second. All of those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Chief Rose. Deputy Chief Rose.
Yeah, show and tell this time.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you again. This agenda item is in reference to us having a project of switching from the body cameras and in-car cameras that we're currently using to the, at least the body camera that you're looking at now, hopefully. In two thousand seven, uh, that was the first year that I remember of us trying to go to some sort of body worn camera. That started out as a very inexpensive, but also very cheap, little Scorpion camera DVR thing, that, they were pretty, pretty neat to work with, but all of the video that was taken of, and it might not be a reference that you understand, but all the video looked like it was something from the Blair Witch Project. It was very shaky and very, you know, made everybody look like they were possessed by something. But that was what we had, and that's what we could afford at the time. We did have, also during that time, and in two thousand and four, when I started at the office, we had one in-car camera in our car, and that was a system that actually worked off of VHS cassette tapes. Well, during the course of the years, just like everything else, technology has gotten better and better, and at first, the body cameras and in-car cameras were just way too expensive for us to even get into here in Beaufort County, but over time, that, that has changed, and also the, just the, the culture of where we are as a society, and, and the evidentiary needs of our law enforcement agencies, when it comes to collecting evidence against people when we're trying to get convictions in court. Not, also not to mention, and a very significant part of this, but it is secondary to the law enforcement parts of it, is, is that for, we need cameras now for just people to have an understanding of what's going on, and for liability mitigation when it comes to lawsuits for excessive force and other things. So Digital Ally was who we had equipment from for years and years. That product is still good as far as the camera goes, but we had issues mainly with the hardware. I, I call them a one-fight camera. You would have a DVR base, that would be the battery pack, that would be somewhere on the uniform, and then there would be a cable or a cord that would connect to the actual camera piece. So they would make good videos when we're in testing, but when we're fighting, usually the video would be abruptly ended, you might hear audio later, but you would see the camera on the ground sort of looking up at something. And to your question, before you even ask it, we, we fight probably a little bit more with folks, more than what you would think that we would. I'm not saying that it's a whole lot, but there are plenty of times where we have to chase people, tussle with people, and things like that, that, that there would be a, a need for us to, to have cameras for. The product that you're looking at is from BodyWorn. They are in a lot of agencies on the western part of the country. Some of the features and benefits, and I'll go ahead and flat out say, this is a luxury camera compared to what we started out with. But they're really not cameras, they're computers. And if you look at what the device is, it actually looks a lot like a smartphone, and that's how they describe those, is that it has a lot of the same features there. Some of the things that we liked about them was, is that there's no cord or cable that's going to connect or disconnect, but it also has a, a, just different abilities, it's going to be underneath most of the clothing, if you could see with the vest there, all that you're going to see, as far as that camera in the head, is just going to be the little circle. Part of the contract that we have is that during the first year, they're actually going to outfit our uniforms, so we can, that's going to be part of the deal. The patrol guys and most of the people that are going to be wearing, the body cameras are going to be, they're going to switch to an outer carrier for our vests, that's going to be a little bit more rugged, and it's going to help out with that. So this, more of the features and benefits, it's going to have access to either AVLs or locations of where the individual officer is attached to that, to that, uh, device. There's, there's parts of that, that with the in-car cameras, as soon as the lights activate, then it's going to start recording. There's a, a section of that device that we can geofence, so when the calls are coming in from nine-one-one center, they can actually geofence the area that the call is going to be, and as soon as our guys get within that certain amount of coordinates, then the cameras will cut on. So we're trying to, in essence, deputy-proof what the camera's going to be recording and what it's not going to be recording. We don't want to have it where there's instances where the deputy chooses to cut the camera on or cut the camera off when the camera needs to be on. That is a, an issue that, that, it needs to be addressed, and it's addressed in that. It also gives some safety issues where, um, you, you might be more familiar with, um, with personnel or personal protective equipment for firefighters and first responders, that they have gear that if they, if, if a person is standing up, and then they go horizontal, then there would be tones and alarms that would go off, so other firefighters can find out where they are and what's going on, because that is not a normal position to be in. Well, there's also features in this that could do the same thing where if a deputy or officer that's attached to the device goes horizontal and stays that way, then it won't give a, it won't give a notification out or an alarm, but it will give a signal to communication and a placement on a screen that we can see. So, if the person needs help, we can get them help. It also has the ability to pick up the sounds like if it picks up gunfire in the area. You know, just a high pitched, quick hitting sound that the cameras will cut on. So, there's a lot of things that these cameras can do that when we got into cameras years and years ago that they can't, and those things are needed now. As far as the pricing, we've looked into different devices. We looked into WatchGuard, we looked in the Digital Ally who we had before, and then BodyWorn. As far as the features and benefits, far, far surpass the things and the capabilities of the other things that can do. It's not bells and whistles, not a lot of stuff that we don't need or can't use, but it's, they're a better product. And then the service that goes along with it is also, it's actually more beneficial for us. And one of the reasons that we're here before today is that, one, this is a sole source purchase, even though we did do our homework and got information from other things. And this sole source because the specs of this device is different than what we can find in other places, but it's also a multi-year deal. By the rules of the purchasing policy, any multi-year deal has to come before the board. And we're looking for, really, it's a five-year deal, but it's five payments to cover leased equipment. So, if it breaks or changes or we need to exchange during the way, we send, we get a new device that we send the stuff back. We're also going from having memory that we are purchasing with each device that we're also purchasing to using their product with the cloud that is backed up and guaranteed, and that's guaranteed for as long as we're customers. So, I know that was a lot of information, but this is a pretty big deal. And I'll just be, you know, just being honest with you, is that it was a lot of money for me when I first got into looking at it, but the more I think about it, it's actually less that we're paying for this service, which is what it is, and these devices, than we actually pay for smartphones and the data that goes along with that. So, we're paying for a smartphone that actually can record for evidence, can be a life safety issue for the law enforcement officers that are wearing that. And, you know, so if you look at it that way, then it's actually more silly that we're spending the money that we are on the cell phones than we would be for the cameras, if that makes sense.
Mr. Brand.
When you came to us at budget time, what did you figure your budget on these cameras would be?
Right at $60,000. It was in the equipment line.
Did you have any idea that it was going to be a five-year contract?
Yes, and you, there was information that was provided. You know, it could be, and it's prerogative of the board, if you would like to, you can make the one-time purchase of $280,000 or whatever it is to do that. But we just felt with the, and I say we, as far as conversations with the county manager, the finance officer, and our negotiation over the budget, we felt that it was probably more palatable and probably more beneficial to us as a consumer to go with the lease. If we buy them, then they are going to be warranted and guaranteed. But if we are on the lease program, then we actually get more benefits from the, from BodyWorn than we would if we were purchasing flat out.
Okay, I got one more question. What was that watch looking thing?
That was actually, there are going to be capabilities for the deputy to cut on the camera. So, if, you know, just an example, a deputy is serving a civil paper or a subpoena. That is usually not anything that you're going to need video of evidentiary value. But then something happens and the deputy has to go to a law enforcement mode, then that deputy can engage the camera. It's either on the wrist, a lot of our guys that were doing the test and evaluations on are wearing it in their vest, so they can have it right there in their workspace and do that. So, it gives us options to cut the camera on, but there are safeguard triggers like cutting on the lights of your vehicle, or we can even have it where if the, when the doors open of the vehicle, we can have the cameras cut on. Lot of options on that, but that gives the operator a little bit more, little bit more ability to use the device.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I got a couple of questions. The, go ahead, Ed.
I think it's a good device, and you said we could pay for it all one time, hold it to an $8,000, $280,000, was it? Two, whatever it was. But anyway.
And that was just a ballpark, by the way, but it was an under ballpark.
My thing is, we just do it by the month, by the year, because with technology changing, as that changes, then that will, that will also be covered under that, will it?
Yes, from what I understand is that each year, there'll be an evaluation of where we are. But on the third year, if we do year one, year two, year three, on the third year, there'll actually be a replacement of the devices that we have in total and upgrades. So, if there's any upgrades or upgrades in material or cameras, then that'll be a part of that third year process that we would get, we would get all new, all new stuff. But I see exactly what you're saying because, I mean, if you're looking at it as being like cellphone technology or as a computer, then usually computers are obsolete by the time the end consumer gets their hands on them anyway. Don't really see that being in the case of law enforcement cameras, but if it does, then we'll be ready to do that.
And the sucker part, and the sucker part is, have you searched for any grant money to help subsidize these things? I see, I see some departments get funds for cameras and stuff.
We have and will continue to do that. We've also, in the past, we've used several like grants, like JAG grants or things like that, that aren't necessarily attached to the cameras, to purchase cameras. But the thing that I find a lot when it comes to the body camera grants is that there's a lot of strings attached to what you have to do. You're actually collecting a lot of data, in my opinion, for the federal government. And you're having to spend time, I mean, if I get cameras or something and we try to put 60 cameras on people, I'm going to need somebody that just works on that grant to make sure that we can get the information that they're looking to get out of that. If I found a good deal, then without a doubt, we would use it. But I really haven't found good deals when it comes to cameras.
And the last part of my question is this, is there any policy in place when our deputies are out? I mean, you know, you see on TV and he reading newspapers, the camera wasn't working. They didn't cut it on after the shock, the man, then they cut it on. They didn't see what happened before that. Is there any policy in place that, like you said, and I like that, when the lights are on, the camera's on? And when the lights is on, you just don't stop the light, don't turn the light on, just let it deer across?
There is policy, and the policy is pretty standard when it, if you compare our policy with like, say, Durham's or Mecklenburg's or things like that. There are specific parts in the policies about when the camera's supposed to be up and running. I mean, for the most part, I think our agency does a pretty good job, but I'll flat out say, you know, not without getting any detail, but we have terminated deputies for not abiding by the policy when it comes to cameras. You know, not on anything that would really put us in harm's way, but just because of the implications if something were to happen. So, it's a pretty big deal, not just in our agency, but just in good law enforcement agencies overall. Yes, sir.
Richardson. So, what you're getting with the lease is you're getting maintenance?
Yes.
All the repairs and all that sort of stuff?
The only, I mean, just with the caveats that I think most leases and stuff will jump into, if it looks like that we have destroyed a device with malicious intent or something like that, of course, I don't think that that'll be covered, but normal wear and tear, then yes, we're going to get coverage and maintenance. How many of the IT issues that can come up, then we're going to, we're going to get issues with those. And from what I understand, talking with reps from BodyWorn or different conferences and also talking to agencies that are in BodyWorn, is that so far, everything that I've heard is that they're pretty, pretty good to deal with, that if they have a problem with the device, they'll actually send you a device before you even have to send them something.
Who operates this system?
As far as who actually managed the computer part of it?
Who manages the system, who assigns the units, who, when they're using units? Where is the information stored on a daily basis?
Well, on this, this is actually going to be a little bit different if, when we go, if and when we go into BodyWorn. Is that right now, how it works is that everything with our cameras, whether it's the car or whether it's on the deputy, is that they've got pretty much disks that are inside the devices that at the end of the shift or when the camera gets full, they have to go to the office. We've got a designated and dedicated computer that the information goes off of the card and the disk into the system, and then we keep it internally. And we've got retention policies that go along with that. But that's how that's done, pretty much all in-house. We do have safeguards as much as you can on who can manipulate the settings in the cameras. So, we have user rights and administrative rights that, really, I think Captain Jeremy Hewitt, who would oversee the equipment, he would have rights and can actually manipulate the settings. But for the most part, the deputies can record, not record, and then put the stuff into the computer, and then it's safeguarded in the computer. This system is going to be more, part of that is that we're not going to have to have that same, the same issue of the deputies. I mean, if a deputy did something wrong, all they had to do was get from their car to the computer and lose the disk, and it could be gone forever. We might be able to get rid of the deputy, but, you know, you might not be able to get the card back. I'm just saying that's a possibility. With this system, it's going to be more, more run by the car itself and by the camera. We're going to have a, as long as you get close enough to a point at the office, then the information's going to download from the device and it's going to be cloud-based through BodyWorn with our folks having administrative rights. And from what I understand on that, that's pretty robust as well, that we can get access to that video that's kept. As long as we have a policy on retention, they'll follow the retention and then we can have access as long as we're a customer.
What if you're not a customer and you need access?
Then I'm sure that that would be an interesting issue that we'll have to address then because the, we'll put it this way, and anything, we film a lot of stuff that is not kept forever. We'll keep everything for at least 90 days, usually for us, it's twice that for many purposes, for whether charges are taken out later, from where there's a complaint that comes out later, anything, you can come up with whatever scenario. But then after that raid, if it's destroyed, then it's destroyed. If we have anything that we need for evidentiary value, like it's attached to a case, then we take the information and it's going to be burned to discs and entered into evidence. So, there'll be a different way that we can get to the information. But once again on that, I mean, I can flat out ask the question, if a fire happens to hit the places where we've got the discs and it's not in the cloud, then where is it? Well, it's nowhere, you know, so, but this is the next step for us. It's going to be a better product for us. It's going to be more secure for us and it's going to do a better job with what we need to do. But I'll flat out give you that compared to the stuff that we had in 2007, their luxury cameras.
This is, and this is the only company that makes a Wi-Fi operated system like this?
Now, that I don't know. I do know that one of the patents that they have that is different than others is actually how it's seated on the officer, which is one of the benefits that we liked. But as far as the ins and outs of who can make what and who can make it better, I don't know. I just know that about of all of the companies that we've seen, just looking at features and benefits, there's no other company, and any of the big ones, whether it's WatchGuard or Digital Ally, that can touch these guys.
I have a problem with the single, you know, the single provider, but other than that, everything sounds good.
Yeah, I'm sure you're also talking, when it goes up in the clouds, then you can actually download it back.
That's correct.
So, you've got backup even.
That's correct.
Commissioner Brand.
So, we're going to spend $59,000 a year for five years for this contract. A simple yes or no? Will all our patrol officers plus our drug unit have one of these units?
I would love for the drug unit to have a unit, but right now with the numbers that we have, it's all of the patrol, all of the frontline patrol vehicles. So, marked vehicles with people in uniforms like I'm wearing right now that answer 911 calls and are, have more likely to deal with the SNAP issue that they need to film. Those are covered, 25 cameras for the cars. And then the others, 39, which is covering the body cameras for those officers, for the deputies that drive those vehicles, and then we're also covering school resource officers. I would love to put a body camera on everybody that is sworn and detention staff, but I just don't think that we can afford that. But if it's your prerogative to make that an issue, I will find you the number and bring it right back to you.
Well, if you could do that, I would appreciate it. Is there any reason why we don't, we don't put body cameras on the, on the drug unit other than?
Right now, it's just cost. You know, right now, it's just now.
Just cost.
Now, I can't put, I can't put a camera that is semi-concealed, but not concealed on a guy who's in plain clothes working drug cases. But, but I would love to have a device for when we are doing the raids that we're robbing around in our crew cab trucks with six people in it, jumping out and pulling people out of their houses. I would love for our drug unit to be wearing the cameras when they're doing those. And if that's the case, then Commissioner Richardson can watch all that stuff on TV later.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yes, sir.
Give me those numbers again on cars, there was how many?
25.
And then 39.
And then 39. And that covers the 25 people with the cars on the front line and then 14 positions for the SROs. That's each school and the supervisor.
So, they're on the scene, that thing is transmitting back to where?
It's, if, you have to get, you have to get pretty close. No, I mean, it'll be recorded in the device. But then, once you get within an area close to the sheriff's office where we're going to have the link up, then it's going to start downloading it from there.
Commissioner Brand.
I have one more, Charlie, I forgot to ask you this. Is, are your commission officers wearing those body cameras? Like the lieutenants, the sergeants?
No.
They're not wearing them?
No. The level that we are right now, and that's going to increase with this purchase, right now, it's patrol sergeant, who is the frontline supervisor that runs our day-to-day operations on the road 911 callers, the corporal under them, and then the three and going on to four deputies that are going to be under, under them within the next six months or so.
One more question. SROs, are they, are they going to have these?
Yes, yes, they're a part of that.
You said, okay.
The only, we tried, tried to negotiate and try to figure out a way that I could get bailiffs into these devices and this, but just the price point, I needed the price point to be roughly to the point of that $60,000 that we spent for firearms the last two years to keep the equipment line roughly the same. You know, so I thought that that was important, so there wouldn't be an uptick in the overall budget. But it's buying equipment that we really desperately need.
Any more questions?
How many units?
25 and 39. 25 caller, 39 officer.
Oh, okay.
Any more questions?
What is the cost for additional units? We're at 64 now, 25 and 39. I mean, we're talking on the 39 grade.
I can, I can get back to you with the actual numbers, but when what we were looking at, the next step up, we would be adding eight cameras. So, I mean, it would be pretty substantial. If you look at the camera per cost, right now, it's a little over $1,000 per unit per year, or actually a little under if you look at the total that we're going to be paying for what we're looking at. That's going to stay roughly the same, but if you just wanted to say that for each additional device, we need to add $1,000 per year, I think that we would be safe on that because the more we buy, actually, the less that's going to come down.
It is going to come down? Because I was looking, looking at the math, you're talking about 59 times 5 divided by 64, comes out to $4,609 roughly. So, you think it would be less than that possibly for each additional unit?
I mean, that's just adding bailiffs. We've got six drug unit investigators, we've got seven criminal investigators, we've got, let's see, 16 frontline detention officers that I would love to get a camera on. So, if we start, if we're saying total implementation, I mean, I would definitely love to get you that number. And we'll see, but if, but other than that, it's talking about adding eight if you want bailiffs, but add another 16 if you want jailers, but add another six if you want drug unit operators, but add another seven if you want criminal investigators and, you know, and then that would leave, the only people that that would leave out would be the division commanders, who I wish we did get into more law enforcement stuff than what we do. But for the most part, my job is figuring out what this board's going to need and try to go from that. So, I haven't needed body armor on my front, I needed it more on my back than that when dealing with a lot of these things with SROs.
So, it's really important to know what the economy of scale is going to be, wouldn't it be, to figure out what future costs would be?
Sure, absolutely. And we've looked as much as we And, and we've looked as much as we can look, and I've told you sort of our thoughts going into it. It's expensive, but we had to recalibrate really what the needs were and what the money needed to be, but also looking at the way that we were going to be scrutinized, and we need to be scrutinized. I needed the equipment line to be as close to what it was last year, you know, otherwise there'd be, talking about, you know, overspending and bells and whistles and toys, not tools, and all of that stuff, so I was trying to avoid that while we were negotiating an overall budget.
Commissioner Booth?
Charlie, getting back to what Stan was asking you, you said you need 16 for your jailers. I mean, why would you need 16? Can't, can't you get the four for you? I mean, I'm just asking.
Sure.
I'm not micromanaging. Can't you get the four, and, and because they don't need them, huh? Not unless the wife beating them or something. But, but why can't you just get those four and leave them, leave them there, and when the next shift come in, they put them on, like you was, the numbers you got right here that's four?
Those decisions, I mean, can be made. I've, for-
What we're trying to do is get you as much-
Sure, sure. For, for years, what I found, and I was, I was one of the deputies that was in charge of equipment, you know, doing, doing quartermaster duties for several years at the office, and what I found, whether it's, whether it's a pin, or whether it's a car, or whether it's equipment that you're on, or whether it's a steel anvil, if, if you give somebody and sign up, and I put Commissioner Richardson, this is your gear, and you sign for it, and you're responsible for the uptake and, and for that gear, then I can hold Commissioner Richardson responsible for that. If, if the more and more we get into community property, the more and more where it's less like, it's, we are less apt to be able to hold the person, the individual person accountable for anything that goes along, and there will be things that go along with it. We will find stuff that's recorded that doesn't need to be recorded, we'll find stuff and hear about issues that aren't recorded that need to be recorded, and if I can go to Commissioner Richardson and say, I want your device that we've issued you, and then you go, oh, no, 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 Charlie has that. Charlie had it that time, then, but that, that's all I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not arguing or disagreeing, but if you're asking Charlie Rose his opinion on community gear, that would be the answer that I give you.
I ju, I just have an observation. You know, wiring everybody is becoming kind of Orwellian. We don't need 1984 where everybody knows everything that everybody's doing all the time or access to it. You're going to reach a, a point of diminishing returns with this. If everybody is wired up, they're going to, they're going to be on stage and putting on a performance, you're going to get less law enforcement. Some of these people, supervisors in particular, don't need to be wearing body cams. There, there are management people with any, any organization that don't need this kind of tracking. They have to make decisions and do things and be places and look after things that not everybody necessarily needs to know about. So there's a point of diminishing return. I'm, I'm happy, I'm, I'm struggling now to vote for this with the number of units that we have now, but if you're going to increase the number of units, I'm definitely against it, because it's too Orwellian.
The only, you know, if lieutenant level, and there's only four of them at our office, they run the divisions. You know, we've got civilian staff that runs the 911 center, which we'll never have a need for any of those folks to wear a camera. I can't think of a reason why I would need to have a body camera. The sheriff, of course, is not going to need a body camera, and, and that level is the policymakers within our office. The, the folks that are on the front lines and implement the policy that we put in place are the folks that are first sergeant and down, which are the people that we eventually would love to have cameras, but we're not even there yet. We're at the point where it's sergeant down, so there's at least another supervisory rank that is on the ground level that we're not ready to put on there. So I, I would tend to agree with you with the statement that you're making here, is that there is a number and a cap that it gets to that we aren't going to really need for our agency, but we're not there yet. And that's all I have on that.
Time to vote. You got another question?
No.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, 7-0 passes. Martin. Thank you, Charlie.
Good evening again. I'm here to talk about another location that was mentioned in the hurricane watch. We're requesting an update to the November 5th vote of the commissioners on the Economic Development Performance Grant for Project New. As you can tell, that's been a little while, and we've been working with the state to get a, a grant for Project New to renovate the facility they're in. Suffice to say, we got half a million dollars for them from the Department of Commerce to renovate the building they will be using, and also financing is going to be coming from Tideland EMC, and there will be money for training through the community college. The changes, the main change is that through efficiencies and cost savings, that the project has reduced from 1.5 million to 1.2, I'm sorry, $1,250,000, but they still will be spending 250,000 on equipment. The number of employees will remain the same at 25, with 30 seasonal employees, and the business plan shows that the full-time employees will be paid $12 per hour based on a 1,600-hour work year. This is to match the, the Department of Commerce CDBG grant numbers. The CDBG grant also requires that 60% of those jobs are filled from people who are currently low or moderate income, in low or moderate income households. As you know, Bellhaven really does need these jobs, as they have very high unemployment rate and high poverty rate compared to the rest of the county. I've shown you in a table that by reducing the 1 million, the investment to 1,250,000, that the property tax revenue for that would be about $45,784 over a five-year period. If, like all economic development grants in Beaufort County, the grant will only be paid after the county has collected Project New property taxes for the year, and the amount will not exceed the property taxes paid in any particular year. The grant also mirrors the CDBG rules that the 25 jobs created by the Economic Development Grant must be created in the first two years of the grant, and then held for five years of the grant plus one. So, so that would be a mirror as well. And if the, if the grant, sorry, if the jobs are not held for that period of time, then proportionally, part of the grant would be repaid. So the request is to take into account these changes in the project so that what we do mirrors that of what the state is doing, and that's basically, I'd ask that the county manager, myself, and the attorney work with Project New to provide an estimated $45,000 Economic Development Performance Grant to create 20 full-time jobs and, and an investment of 1,500,000 in Beaufort County.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Stand, just stand and vote.
You've got to call the next.
Will you, okay, six, okay, all opposed, 6-1.
Thank you very much.
Motion passed. Thank you, Martin. Just checking. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This item regarding the solid waste, as you'll recall, at the May 6 regular meeting, the board received a presentation from CDM Smith on that solid waste convenience site study. Part of that study was looking at the convenience sites, what improvements needed to be made to them to make them safe, and also it looked at some potential consolidation and some, some other things related to that. Since that report was given, obviously, there's been a lot of conversation about that in the public when it was given, that, that conversation continues. In regards to actual action items from that study, we are currently working with CDM Smith on the redesign of the Ranssonville site, and that is currently with the core engineers approving the delineation of the wetlands on that site. So that is actually the only thing that's taking place, because that was essentially moving forward, it's what the board said to move forward with. There's been no additional discussion from the board's perspective on that study on what you wanted to do. Because that information is starting to get a little old, and because there's continuing to be conversation about that, our request to the board is that, that if the board chooses to move forward with some of those, there needs to be some additional discussion about those and, and decide what you want to do with them, or the board could say, we're not going to do anything with them, but we need some direction in that, so we would suggest to the board that you put together a group to, to look at those, take some public comment on it, and then come back to the full board with some recommendations on the recommendations, and whether they be do this or don't do anything. So that would be our request from you.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second. This is, this is to set up a committee.
So only set up a committee. Any discussion? All those in favor, please?
Yeah, really quick, we have a draw there, Charlie. I just have one discussion. We commissioners are supposed to deal with solid waste, why do we need a committee? I don't understand that. All the years I've been a commissioner, it's not that elaborate of a discussion or, or thought process to deal with it.
Committee of all commissioners.
Exactly, but why do you need a committee when we can just discuss it and decide it here on, at the dais, whenever it needs to be discussed?
We need some study.
I'm going to vote against it. I think it's too much, many, too much overlay in government. Well, I'm done now, so I would-
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner.
I mean, the only other option I would, I would recommend is that, you know, if the consensus is not to have a committee, would be to have a workshop where the everything, where the time is designated just on the solid waste and ask for public comment.
I, I would agree with that.
We've got a motion.
Set up a committee.
You might on?
Hi. No, I was, I was trying to direct you on your mic, your mic was off, sorry. All those in favor of setting up a, as the motion mentioned, setting up a committee, raise your right hand. All those opposed, 5-2, motion pass.
Chairman?
Yes.
I recommend that my dear colleague Stan Detreser on that committee.
Okay.
Mr. Brand?
Yeah, I would like to sit down.
Mr. Waters?
Commissioner Waters?
We have a committee? Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to recommend Stan myself.
Well, I know about waste.
Brian, I had, I had a comment this morning from one of the local citizens that uses the Ranssonville site, and his concern was, is based on what happened last year when the hurricane was coming in, is that two or three days beforehand, people were bringing a lot of extra things? Is there any way that we can beef up the number of containers or truckers that are going? And, and also, the site at Beach Ridge got so messy, they kept staying open, and it got so messy that then after hurricane passed, they had to close the site down for, I think it was one or two days, to clean it up, which to me, we're better off to go ahead and, when it gets, when it starts getting that way, that it's going to have to be manually picked up, is that we cut, we lock the site until after the hurricane.
Did let him respond, Brian respond.
Christina, Christina Smith, who manages that program, actually had a conversation with Nikki Hopkins, who is the local manager from Republic, either Sunday afternoon or Monday, about that exact thing regarding all of our solid waste sites, that typically before hurricanes come up, we start seeing a lot of folks getting stuff out of the way and cleaning things up and getting them so they don't fly around. So they are anticipating that, they had already staffed up to be able to do additional hauls. The other thing related to that is that they've got to have time to get the site clear, because they don't want to leave a lot of stuff on the site once they shut it down. So they will be shutting those sites down, we don't know the exact time and date yet, but they will close those sites during the hurricane, but they will, they will need to have time to get them cleaned and emptied before they shut them down, so they will be adding additional people and then working to do those.
Commissioner Brown?
I think those are the type of things that the committee can work on. We can bring in supervisors of these areas that, that, that have actual hands-on on the project and, and get their feedback from it and things, and we'll let, after, after we do that, then we'll know what exactly to do, whether we need to, to leave it alone or shut it down. And I've had quite a few calls from, from different people in the county, it's really concerned about shutting several sites down.
Brian?
The second item is the Essential Single Family Rehabilitation Loan Program for fiscal year 19 with the Wooton Company. The first piece is the contract with the Wooton Company. As you recall, back in December of 18, this is a program that rolls around every three years. It's a grant program that's set up that rolls around every three years, and we are eligible for it every three years. When it rolled around in December of 18, we were notified by the COG that they would not be able to do the work. They had traditionally done the work for us, so we scrambled, we had conversations with the board about that. We scrambled, and the Wooton Company was able to do it for us, they were actually able to do it for us within the confines of the grant. Under the last program, the COG was charging us an additional $2,000 on top of the eight that they received through the grant to manage the program. So the Wooton and Company has submitted it, we received it, there's $190,000 that's in that grant, it's set, it's through the North Carolina Housing Finance Administration, where they set up a forgivable loan of up to $30,000, it's forgivable, forgivable at $5,000 a year for six years for eligible recipients relating to the home. There are certain criteria that kick them out of it, so if they sell the house, then the loan is automatically repaid, has to be repaid, but it helps fix issues with the home, and there are certain folks that qualify for that. There are income standards, income requirements, there are veteran requirements, there are lead standards in there, if you have children, that make you eligible, but, and we'll talk about those in a minute. This is the actual contract with Wooton, so the program is managed by them, they receive under the contract that's set up by, on the allowable's, $8,000 per unit to manage it, so it's for five units, so they get a total of $40,000 out of this to manage every bit of it, and then the remaining $30,000 per unit is set up as a forgivable loan. So this is the contract, we'd recommend your approval to move forward.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
How do people, I understand the requirements, that you've got to be a certain income level and that, and veteran and all that, but how do people go about applying for these grants?
That's part of the next policies, the assistance policy.
Okay.
And the other one, there'll be advertisement, and then there'll be a, a, a list of criteria that they go through, but yes, that's part of it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. This is the assistance policy and the procurement and dispersment policy that is related to the 2019 cycle of Essential Single Family Home Rehabilitation Loan Pool. These policies are, are essentially set up and in compliance with the North Carolina Housing Finance Administration. It lists what it is, how to apply, who's eligible for it, the ranking system, how they evaluate who, who is eligible, then it also talks about in, in the next policy, the procurement and dispersment policy, so it's very tight in how they do it. So that is there for you to read, but these are the policies that are required to be approved by the board for the program to continue. We'd recommend your approval.
Is there a motion to do the assistance policy and the procurement and distribution policy?
Certainly.
Got a second?
Say.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, 5-2, motion passed.
Well, I have a proposal here, but I, I would like to hear the managers' report on where we are with the, the status of the approval of FEMA MAMS.
Had a conversation, or I actually sent an email to Randy Mutt, who is with the North Carolina Department of Emergency Management, Department of Public Safety, and I asked him if there was an update on the status- if there was an update on the status for the FEMA, for the FEMA maps. His, his reply to me was, and I've had this specific question asked of him, has everything been submitted? Are we in the process? And that was yes, but there's a lot of paperwork that moves back and forth. So I'm assuming that's what this is. But he says, "We're assembling the final paperwork to send to FEMA. We'll be requesting a November 15th letter of final determination, which makes data and mapping effective May 15th of 2020. The caveat is, we're a bit concerned about FEMA being able to process the abundance of documentation in a timely manner, considering FEMA Region 4 has already been activated to respond to the impacts of Hurricane Doran. FEMA is aware of our intentions, along with its request, including 17 other counties, and we're checking with them to verify that they have staff to handle this. As soon as we know the full impacts of Doran on FEMA's workload, we'll have a better handle, but presently, we're expecting November 15th for a letter of final determination."
Well, that's the first time I think we've ever gotten the truth out of that guy. Because all we've been hearing is in the next few months, the next few months, and now we finally see that the process hasn't been, even been started. And we got people, I've got one customer, well, I've got more than one customer, that are paying $4,000 and $5,000 for flood insurance, that are not even gonna be in the flood zone when this map comes out. You know? They got basements or something. It pulled, it, this is, this is a very expensive thing for the people of Beaufort County. The proposal, the latest proposal that I saw drops the flood level in Washington four feet. I don't recommend anybody build these new maps, 'cause I know better, but from the standpoint, it's called a firm, a flood insurance rate map, and it sets the rates that people pay for flood insurance. There's at least $5 million in this county that people are gonna save when this stuff's finally approved. The date that these maps could have been approved was 2013. Why? Because the 100-year flood was based on the 1913 flood event in this county. This has been a foot-dragging process from day one, and it's been up and down, it's been sideways, simply because no political pressure has been put on it. And I was really hoping that you would have something a lot more definitive than that, because I'm still with just promises. I mean, he's just telling us, gee, we're just starting the process. We're not sure, we're gonna have staff to do this. This brings the resolution that I have, makes the resolution I have tonight even more important insofar as serving the people of Beaufort County and the people of eastern North Carolina. And it'll take about a minute to read it, but I'll read it. Whereas new flood insurance rate maps should have been presented to eastern North Carolina counties located on the Pembroke River region during the year 1913. And whereas, 2013, excuse me, thank you. Whereas almost six years has passed with no final maps having been presented, and whereas new maps have been promised for the past two years and possibly longer, with no evidence of said final maps having been presented. And that's just what the manager just told us. Whereas there should be significant reductions in rates in addition to significant changes in the definition of the flood hazard plane, which will result in a large number of properties no longer being required to purchase flood insurance, and therefore be it resolved, Beaufort County Government, take the lead to organize a lobby group of counties to contact, confer with, visit, and use any other means deemed reasonable and effective to otherwise lobby the state of North Carolina and the federal government to release the latest edition with revised rate schedules of the flood insurance rate maps to the various counties for their individual approval. And let me insert this. For those of you that don't know how this works, the official rate, the maps are given to the counties. It's up to the county commissioners to approve that map. And the reason is because the maps are enforced through the local building officials who issue building permits. That's how it works. That's why this is important. Be it further resolved, that said lobby group of counties secure a refund to be paid to citizens for the excessive and otherwise unnecessary flood insurance premiums paid since 2013. And follows, I hope you'll vote for this, because just voting for this and getting this in the right hands of FEMA is gonna cause some things to start happening. Yes, we do need to send this to all of the flood counties in eastern North Carolina. We do need to call a conference in those counties. We do need to sit down and get organized. And for those of you that are new to the board and don't know how this has worked in the past, this is how we got major changes, which affected development in eastern North Carolina in the stormwater program. We did identically this same thing. We passed the resolution. The county manager went out and contacted the counties. We pulled them all together in a conference situation, and the next thing we know, we're sitting at the legislature in Raleigh, and we got the law changed. So if you want to serve the people of the county $5 million a year, this is a good way to do it. I heartily recommend that we pass this. So moved.
Mr. Richardson, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I wanna suckle this motion so badly, I don't know what to do, but I wanna ask you for a friendly amendment, that we remove that back payment from 2013. That's gonna only complicate what we're doing. And if you would take that friendly amendment, I will gladly suckle that motion.
Well, let me say this to you. This is the teeth in this thing. When you see that these guys are all of a sudden gonna be on the spot to where they're gonna have to give money back, it's, that's the one thing, this is gonna, that will resonate to Washington DC, right into the head of all of these people, and then they're gonna, they're gonna start looking around and saying, what did we do wrong? We need to fix this. So please don't make me change that. This, this is the teeth. This is what's gonna go to Washington.
I don't agree with, with, ask them to give us back pay. It is the whole county, yeah, the county. I really don't. But this is important to the citizens of Beaufort County. But I will suckle that motion, but I'm still disappointed that we're gonna ask the federal government to give us reparation.
Well, let me, let me, let me say this to you, Commissioner. I don't think we're gonna get it. I, I just think the threat of it is enough to resonate in Washington DC, because this, this is the innovative part of this whole motion, because when these guys...
I suckle your motion.
Start reporting up the line, we may, we may have to...
Mr. Brown?
Well, everything that I was gonna say, just got said. But I have to agree with Commissioner Richardson on the, on the, on the last paragraph. Even if we don't, even if citizens of Beaufort County don't get any money back, which I doubt very seriously they do, but it will force FEMA and the federal government to get off their butts and go to work. Thank you.
I think the manager's probably gonna have to help me a lot with this, and maybe Charlie, because they're, they're the ones that are on the point, doing the work. Our committee met, Commissioner Waters was there, and Commissioner Evans, and what we decided basically is to put a lot of effort into reexamining all of the information that the sheriff's department has collected. 19 items are already at one well-known national outfit that I can't call the name of, being, who? Microtrace. Being examined now, and what we asked these guys to do, we selected a forensic investigator to go forward with DNA and other forensic examinations of the evidence, including the 19 items that are, that are at a different location at Microtrace. And they are moving forward with that. The committee just met about three or four days ago. So with that, I'll turn it over to the manager and, and the chief deputy to carry the rest of my water. Thank you.
From that, we've have, I've sent an email to the folks at University of Florida at the lab that the committee selected to do the work. I've sent them an email and said, "We'd like to get together on a conference call with the sheriff's office and their investigators to discuss what evidence there is and what they may be able to do to help us with that." I ended that by saying, "Keep your heads down, 'cause you guys are directly in the line of fire right now." I have not heard back from them yet, and it looks like they're gonna miss it and it's gonna come to us. So, so I anticipate hearing back from them soon, but I have not heard back from the lab yet.
We have not set another meeting date, because there's not much we can do, since we've made a decision on how to go forward, but if it becomes necessary and new information becomes available or whatever, we will set another meeting date, which will be an advertised meeting date.
Commissioner Brown?
I just got just a quick statement to make. I want to commend Chairman Richardson and the two commissioners that, that helped him out on this project. They've assembled a great panel of people that really do know what they're doing, and I think that, in a very short, short period of time, that we will, we will come to a conclusion of this and let, and let it go to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Stan, oh, by the way, this came from a commissioner committee?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. That concludes my report on that particular item. Good, okay. All right. All right.
Stan should do item... Request on page 227. Request reversal.
You ought to have this in your hand, Stan.
You do it.
This is, so back in June, the governor wrote this, June 26th, he came out with this comment in regards to HB 370, when it was in its early formation.
"As a former top law enforcement officer in our state, I know that current law allows us to lock up and prosecute dangerous criminals regardless of immigration status. This bill isn't about that. In addition to being unconstitutional, it's about scoring political points and using fear to divide us," end quote. All right, that's what our governor talked about, and then he summarily, just recently, in the last, I think, couple of weeks, elected to veto HB 370, and currently, I don't think there's enough votes to override the veto, although that could happen. And I would like to add to this resolution that has been written. I didn't write this one, but it was submitted by one of the members of the public. And I would like to also add some language in there that not only do we wish that the governor reverse his veto, but if it not be reversed, that significant votes within the Senate and House override the governor's veto. The governor's concerned about dividing us. I don't understand that. I mean, we're talking about legals and illegals being here in this country and trying to live together peaceably. Now, ICE, which is a law enforcement agency and deals with what goes on within our borders, needs to be worked with by every sheriff in this county, excuse me, in this state. I'm sure that our sheriff would, would, would conform instantly to work with ICE, but there are other counties within the state that have a much more progressive view of how to deal with these issues. And some of these sheriffs are very close to declaring their counties sanctuary counties. And I think what the General Assembly wants to do is, is tell these sheriffs that there are ramifications that they may not want if they decide to go against the law of North Carolina. So I think in short, that's what this bill was about, to serve notice to the sheriffs of North Carolina that you will follow the law, and we're gonna give you a law that will remove you from office if you do not. So I think it, and you other commissioners would like to speak to this, please feel free to.
Commissioner Waters?
Mr. Chairman? We, this was brought up, I think in May, and at that time, it had not gone through the compromise committee and been rewritten. The concern that I have has been addressed. I'll support this resolution as written. I see really no advantage to add anything in addition to it. I mean, I think, I think this is it in a nutshell, so I'll support it as written. I would, I would yield to you to make the motion, since it's your item.
Well, it's Hoods as well, but any of you commissioners can make the motion. I will make the motion, if Commissioner Waters will agree to it, to adopt this resolution as written.
I'll, I'll second it, since you did that.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Time to vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Five-two, motion pass.
And it pretty much sums it up. Resolution on Second Amendment rights, whereas the right to keep and bear arms is a constitutional right of American citizens guaranteed in the Bill of Rights of the Second Amendment, and whereas our constitutional rights under the Second Amendment are under threat by those who want to restrict those rights by either banning semi-automatic rifles or imposing red flag laws that also trample upon the Fifth Amendment right to due process of law. And whereas the opponents of our Second Amendment rights falsely call semi-automatic rifles military weapons, when no army in the world uses such weapons. And whereas the president of the European nation recently, recently observed correctly that a free, in quotes, "A free country does not disarm its citizens," in quotes. Therefore, be it resolved that the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners opposes any attempts to ban semi-automatic rifles or to impose red flag laws that trample upon the due process of law. Okay? That is one resolution that has been offered as we talk about conceal, allowing concealed carry in our, our government buildings. And I, I think we're, at some point, we're gonna have to go to that, because as, and I would like for these two issues to be, maybe not together, you can, you can disagree with me, but please vote for this resolution, but I would like for you to hear me out on this. These gun-free zones that we have in our, in our buildings, thank God, we've never had an opportunity where somebody that's crazy wanted to come here, shoot up the courthouse or shoot up when we're in here, God forbid. But these, these gun-free buildings become free-fire zones if there's not someone with a weapon to, to, to challenge that person that is shooting. Now, I can tell you right now, in my opinion, as I've watched all of these shooting events across this nation, if there was someone out there, a victim, or a part of the victimhood that is, that's being shot at, had a weapon, whether they hit the person or not, that person would seek cover. And hopefully, they would hit the person. One way or another, it would limit the amount of deaths that are occurring. People that receive permits, people that are, that do everything they have to do to get the proper permit, generally are good, law-abiding citizens. They know how to handle firearms, they wouldn't get the permit. And they, most people, if they carry a weapon, they know they need to know how to use it, because if you don't know how to use it, somebody can take it from you and use it on you. So let's just think about this. Why do we have the Second Amendment to begin with? We have it to protect ourselves and form a militia if necessary. So why do we, why are we limiting people from their Second Amendment rights when they could provide a use... a use to not only the community, but society as large, when these crazed and deranged people start shooting up places? So think about it. We can talk about a motion for both, a motion for one or together. But, and I see some of you other commissioners would like to discuss this, I yield.
Commissioner Brown.
I want to support this, Stan. I just want to let everybody know, if you haven't heard it, that the shooter in El Paso did not pass a background check, but he got a gun anyway. So I want everybody to think about that. So what we got to do is take the guns out of the hands of the criminal and the mentally ill, and then we'll have a safe zone. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Waters.
We've discussed this as it relates to the concealed, and I'm trying to remember, and I'm looking for Chief Deputy Rose or either our county manager or our attorney. Right now, you cannot, even with a concealed weapon, you cannot carry it in our courthouse or on our schools. Is there a third one? I was thinking it was three.
Can't carry in this building.
What'd you say, can?
Any other public, any other county.
Any government building.
Any county building.
Any county building.
Yeah. Gun-free zone.
All government, okay.
That's why Charlie's got a gun on him.
Charlie can't be everywhere.
I mean, I'd like to see it voted on two different ways. The resolution as it relates to red flag laws, I would like for you to explain exactly what you're trying to say about red flag laws. I think I do, but I'd rather for you to try to give me your thoughts on that.
I didn't write this resolution. It was submitted by a member of the public.
Well, I would.
I was really was talking about taking away the gun-free zone in our county buildings.
Well, my concern about the red flag is that, you know, let's just say we've got a neighbor that's 40 years old and has been in and out of drug rehab, and he has access to guns, and he shoots a car, got people in it, he's picked up, post bond, then they find that he's got a hit list. Now, the way I've been told under the red flag or proposed is that, you know, we could take those guns away from that individual with some kind of due process. And that's my interpretation of red flag. I mean, to me, red flag laws, if used properly with some kind of due process, has got to be part of the several prongs to help solve our problem.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner. What Commissioner described is not a red flag law, that's a fore cause. A red flag law is a law that goes with just part of what you described. Let's just say that the guy has been on drugs or accused of having been on drugs. He doesn't have any other criminal history. With red flag laws, if he's used certain drugs, then the sheriff would have the right to go and take the guns. It opens the door to a lot of false accusations, but what you described was a person who did a criminal act. So that opens a whole different door to where you can use due process as you described in order to deal with that person, because he's already proved that he's been dangerous. The person that's just been accused of drugs has only used drugs, he hasn't threatened anybody, he hadn't shot a car, he hadn't done this or that. There are a lot of other kinds of things where if someone was declared an alcoholic, if someone was receiving psychological services and counseling, that the counselor would be required, and the counselors now are required to turn a lot of people in, that the counselor would be required to report him to the sheriff, and the sheriff could go get his guns for virtually no reason at all. He hasn't done anything criminal. That's the red flag. The red flag is, maybe there's something out here, we don't know. What you described was a criminal act, which is legitimate to close in on him. So that's why I don't like the red flag laws, because they open the door for a lot of abuse. You need several acts in order for a person to lose their rights to use the guns, but they need to be, even one serious act is probably enough. That's not red flag. Red flag is, hey, it looks like we don't like that guy, and it looks like he could do some damage, so we're going to go take his guns.
Commissioner Langley.
Okay, and I'm going to say this, and I'm not against guns, because I have guns, but I'm going to say this, is I understand the Second Amendment, but when our forefathers penned the Second Amendment, there were no AK-47s. I mean, you had Mosels. I mean, that, and I don't have a problem with people having guns in their homes. I mean, that's the world we live in today, but I just want to make this statement. There are some weapons that people just don't need to have access to, and that's all I want to say.
Commissioner Brown.
Just to comment on what Mr. Langley said, we had muzzleloaders when the Second Amendment was written. Well, when the repeating 45 came out, we still had the Second Amendment. Second of all, Charlie, if you could come up and give your opinion on red flag, I know you're going to enjoy this.
My own opinion, I'm a southern boy, grew up around here, been around guns my whole life, comfortable around guns, comfortable enforcing laws with people that are around guns. And I've always thought that you've got to do two or three things with any weapon before you actually use that weapon on somebody. So if you're paying attention to what's going on, then, you know, and doing your job, then for the most part, it's going to be okay. I'll also agree, and this is my opinion here, is that, just to go to the statement of the forefathers and everything, is that, you know, since the beginning of time until now, the main carry for folks in the public has been usually comparable to what the frontline infantry person in the military would carry. You know, in the times that the Second Amendment was written, it was a musket, and now the frontline infantry carries M4s, which were pretty much AR-15s. You know, I think that, me personally, I think it's more in lines of a constitutional carry, meaning that if you can legally carry a firearm, then you ought to be able to legally carry a firearm without a permit. I mean, I believe that the sheriff feels that way as well in conversations that we've had. But I also understand another reality of the situation where, you know, our government is a divided government. There's just as many people on the right side that believe wholeheartedly in one way, and there's just as many people on the left side that believe in another direction, and it's up for the government leaders to actually lead and to come up with laws that make sense when it comes to that, and then other people who are being led will follow that. So you asked for my opinion, and that's what my opinion is.
Charlie, just one quick question. When someone comes in and applies for concealed carry, what kind of background check do you do on that person?
There's three different background checks done for concealed carry. There's one that's done locally by the sheriff's office, there's one that's performed by the State Bureau of Investigation, and then there is a check to mental health, to see if anyone who's applying has been adjudicated mentally incompetent and therefore could not possess a firearm legally, much less concealed. So those are the checks that are performed for. It is pretty much, in any involuntary commitments or commitments, it's actually a civil process. So they do the searches through the clerk's offices, where that's where the paperwork and the adjudications would actually end up. So that's where that mental health check is done, because it would be, there's no way to check each and every mental health facility that a person could actually have to go to. And I hope that that.
Sorry, Charlie. Yeah, one. Go ahead.
I would just like to comment on several things. I agree that this is an exceedingly poorly drawn resolution on Second Amendment rights. I would say to the commissioners, I would not recommend that you approve this and send it anywhere. I mean, this has got more errors in it, and if not outright errors, it is just things that are not explained throughout here, such as red flag laws. We've just talked about that, doesn't say anything about that, trampling upon Fifth Amendment right to due process. How is that so? That doesn't say anything exactly what that was. Falsely calling semi-automatic rifles military weapons, when no army in the world today uses such weapons. What a ridiculous, what's the proof behind that statement? The President of a European nation, what is that? It's just, I don't know who drew it, but whoever drew it didn't put it together. Trampling upon due process of law, how red flag laws that trample upon the due process of law. Who's to say there won't be due process of law? So I can't, there's no way, I read this several times, and it just, it makes no sense to me. I don't recommend that you approve it. On the other issue, which has been coupled with this, this comes up, seems like it comes about every year, somebody brings this up. Seems like the last time the committee members voted on this, commission voted on this probably about two years ago, seems to me. I'm not even going to get into what a militia is and the background of the federal Second Amendment. You probably already know this, but we also have a state constitution that has the identical language in it, plus a few more sentences. But that was what the intention of this original thing was, certainly did not cover AR-15s or 16s. I was trained on an AR-16. I was in the military from '68 to '72. I qualified on that gun, along with also the 14 and a 45, is what I recall, in addition to machine guns and that kind of stuff. I was an infantry officer. So if the question, the pure question here, if it is, how do I feel about my fellow citizens having guns and coming into this meetings, the so-called good person with the gun, which I've heard, which will make these things stop? I think it's a terrible idea. I feel, how safe do you feel coming into this building now versus how safe do you feel if there's 15 guns sitting out here and somebody pulls a gun and people start That's me, and maybe I'm going beyond what I should say, but I think that's just lunacy.
Hang on, then you. I'm opposed to it, I opposed to it a year and a half ago, and I'm opposed to it now. It's just something I don't like about being in a government building and something goes bad, and there's somebody in a weapon. Charlie's guys come in there, and he's trying to figure out who the real threat is. Everybody says, oh, we can figure it out. I just, I just don't think that's a place to have a concealed weapon, is in a government building. I don't think the employees are going to feel any safer if they stand up and say, yeah, we'd like to have somebody walking around with a 45 on their hip, then that's, we'll talk about it. But as long as we've got the police department here and the sheriff's department, I just leave these government buildings as they are.
Yeah, thank you. To answer what Commissioner Langley and our attorney, back when our forefathers came up with the Second Amendment, yes, there were muskets, muzzleloaders, there are also rifles. And those rifles were used by our militia and our army to beat the British, and they were very accurate guns. They were beyond the AR-15s compared to the musket, well beyond the AR-15s. And it was, it equalized us tremendously. It helped us tremendously when we were fighting the British in 1812, in the one battle that occurred after the end of the war, the Battle of New Orleans. We killed like 3,000 British and suffered only a handful of casualties ourselves because we had rifles. And that made a big, big difference. You know what a rifle is? It's rifle, and it shoots much more accurately. Today, what they carry in the military. That was not me.
Time to go.
All right. What we care, what the military carries now is well beyond what an AR-15 is, in every regard. And I don't think you can get into, well, that weapon is just too much for the common man, when the common man doesn't want to be disarmed. The great fascist governments of our age, or the age before us, take away the weapons first, and once they disarm the people, they do what they want to the people. So, and also to our attorney, for the most part, the great percentage of the shooting events where innocent people are killed are in buildings with, which are gun-free zones. And then they become free fire zones, because there's nobody there to counter the shooter. So think about that before you make a point of saying the Second Amendment only applies in certain instances in America today. It should apply in every instance. I mean, you take away the Second Amendment, you're going to lose the First Amendment. Once you lose the First Amendment, it's over.
Commissioner Richardson.
Well, I just have an observation to put on the table. Is it going to be better to, would those who intend to vote for this, would you feel better if we rewrote this and brought it back?
I'd be in full agreement of that.
So then I move that we table whatever the motion is and bring this back at the next meeting, rewritten. Well, he just has one, the resolution on the Second Amendment rights, I thought.
Yeah. And if, then, okay. And we can talk about free fire zone versus gun-free zone, too, at the next meeting.
Next table of both.
Well, I made a motion, and you second?
Friendly amendment?
Yeah, to table it.
I'll second the friendly amendment to include both.
Okay, both, rewrite both?
No, the other one isn't really written. It's just a discussion.
Oh.
What he's going to do, Mr. Richardson, is try to do like he done tonight, tie both of them together. You know, I'd hate to sit here beside him with a gun.
Well, if you had a gun, I would want one.
Be careful what you say now, that can get into the red flag real quick.
We're already red flagged, both of us.
Well, Mr. Richardson, I'm serious. I would hate to sit beside him with a gun. I'm serious.
I might save your life, buddy.
We've got a table on the second.
Yes, table.
Hold up a favor to table this item, raise your right hand.
While we're on this subject, I meant to ask that whatever resolutions that have been passed tonight be sent by the clerk to all of the counties and to our representatives.
Are you talking about local and federal? State and federal?
State and federal, yes. Those that have been passed. I don't remember what's been passed.
Yes. Years ago, who was commissioner? I was commissioner. Gary, you were commissioner then? Can't remember. You weren't, you weren't, I remember. Gary was commissioner, so was Ed. And we went through a lot of consternation dealing with our hospital. You remember, the history of that was, we had a deal on the table for community health systems for $30 million, and it was to lease the hospital. There was a group of people that had come to us and said, you're being fooled to take a lease for $30 million. You need to sell this building to buy it and all the property for $9 million, because buy it is a nonprofit, and they will take care of the citizens of Beaufort County, and they will do what is right for us. They will be our benefactor forever and a day. Now we're finding that the site works for us, and there's other things that have happened up there, and it doesn't sound like a nonprofit entity. So consider it, but probably. will be our benefactor forever and a day. Now, we're finding that the psych ward's being closed. And there's other things that have happened up there. It doesn't sound like a nonprofit entity. So consider that probably $50 million of resources, the public's money, has been lost because that deal was taken. And there was, let me just say this, we did have a deal with Community Health on the table, which we could have taken. But if you'll remember, there were a lot of our good citizens, swamp creatures probably, but they, a lot of them called Community Health and said, we don't want your town here. You're not welcome in our neighborhood. Actually, some of them are real Christians, do that kind of stuff, and they're like, get off. So, in fact, they pulled their bid off the table. They did. And so we were stuck with either dealing with Viden or dealing with it ourselves. So the good people of this community got what they wanted. They got Viden. Now, if we're stuck in Viden, which we are, I would like to have them come and tell us how we're going to deal with us from now on. Is it going to be a nonprofit entity, or are they going to have to make money in return? Because before, they closed the psych unit. We've had that psych unit up there for a long, long time. So what's it going to be? Are they going to start shutting down little pieces of the hospital and tell us that it's for our own good? When for our own good is the way it was, when we owned the property, the plant.
Sorry. And so.
Cut your mic off.
Oh, thank you.
Just blabbing.
Sorry, guys. So what do we do? And I would like for them to come and speak with us. I would like for this board to ask that they come and speak and give us an update, so we can ask them the kind of questions we need to ask them. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Stan, when I was going through my book, I saw your page in there. And I've heard all the stuff in the newspaper about that the psych ward made $700,000 a year, this, that, and the other. And I've heard both sides of it. I called Harvey Case this week, or last week, last Friday to be exact. And he said, what kind of person would close a unit down that was making $700,000 a year? Said it was a business decision. Said that the psych ward was not making $700,000 a year. The average Beaufort County citizen to go in that psych ward was one per month. The rest of them came from out of town. Charlotte, Raleigh, because they don't have psych wards up there. So Harvey told me, for you to please give him a call, and y'all set up an appointment, and he would give you the opinion that he has, and you could get the straight facts from him. Now, if you don't want to do that, that's fine. But he's made the offer.
Yeah, that's good. I haven't heard from him.
No, I haven't heard from him.
He's not going to call you. You need to call him.
Okay. Well, okay. That puts the onus on me.
He asked me for you to call him.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm not going to do that. And let me finish. I think that this is not about Stan Deathridge. This is about the people of Beaufort County, which, whom we represent. And the whole psych ward thing is just a symbol. Is it a profit, for profit or nonprofit? It was sold to us as nonprofit. We heard that constantly, every meeting, when they ask us, begged us, threatened us to give away the hospital. That we heard, nonprofit, nonprofit, nonprofit. So is it nonprofit, or is it for profit? I would like to know. And I think if he's going to speak on county, the county issue, which this is, he needs to be here in front of us, the county commissioners and the county, not Stan Deathridge. Stan Deathridge is just a commissioner, one commissioner, representing some constituents. He needs to speak to all commissioners and all constituents. There is no motion. That's just, I would like for us to discuss it. Mr. Chairman, I'll take about a minute. Won't be long. I know you want to get out of here. You know, I was the commissioner that was on the board of the hospital when all this stuff went on. The psych unit was leased out. It was not, never run by the hospital. The second thing is, within the agreement, and I will ask the clerk to please pull that agreement and bring it to the next, have put it in our book for the next meeting, within the agreement, when we gave this, gave this to Viden, they promised to maintain and keep all of the services that were there, not to get rid of them. And that psych unit was one of the services that was talked about. And I will also point out to you that two years ago, according to the article that I saw in the newspaper, the management, that Viden canceled the contract that they had with the people to run the psych unit. Because what the people that were doing with running the psych unit, they were paying Viden. They didn't, Viden didn't care whether they made money or not. But they were paying Viden. So if a contract was canceled, it should have been canceled the other way from the people that had the contract, because they couldn't make money. But they didn't. Viden canceled the contract, according to what I saw in the newspaper. Two years later, they claimed they're losing money. This is the same pattern that was used to shut the Bellhaven Hospital down. When Viden got their clutches into the Bellhaven Hospital, they immediately transferred almost all of Harvey Case's $300,000 a year income as overhead to that hospital. They drove the Bellhaven Hospital bankrupt deliberately so they could shut it down. It was the same tactics that were used over and over. When they're keeping the books, the books are always going to say what they want them to say. But what the important thing is here for us at the next meeting is to have that contractual agreement and see what it actually says that Viden is supposed to do, because they haven't honored any part of that contract so far.
I think we're done, Owen.
I think we're done, too. We'll just defer to the next meeting.
Would you, have you been to Martin General lately? I just cared my mother there.
Martin County?
Mm-hmm.
They still own the hospital. Yes.